Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Ms. Steele, will you please call the board?
Mr. Gibson? Sorry, Mr. Gibson. Dr. Orth?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bazani?
Here.
Mr. Nakosha?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. At this time, I'm going to ask if you stand for my invocation of our pledge led by Dr. Orth.
As Father, He is, Heavenly Father, we are thankful for your many blessings on our county. As officials of this wonderful county, please guide us in doing what is right for our citizens as we continue to discuss the county budget. We face difficult choices that we all may find challenging. Please give us the wisdom to make the best decisions for this county. In all these things, we pray and ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Orth. We need an adoption of the agenda.
It's a move, Senator.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this moves us down to our public comment period. And we ask that you please come and have your statements in three minutes or less. And please keep your comments to the work session agenda only.
Ms. Steele, Mr. Wilmot, Howard Mauer of York. There may not be much to talk about tonight, but as Doge started to look at spending, a small item became known. In the old days when conservative ideas were in place as to budgeting, the personnel by department or division had very tough rules. It appears today, in a liberal environment, your taxes can be spent for personal benefit, especially when your time is done. Policy controls various segments of the workforce and at various levels. Well, in the old days, we had to pay for our coffee and condiments out of our own pocket. It could range from a dollar to five, depending on the occasion. Looking at our books, that is, the budget and spending, I found account codes 4584-1000 and 4584-1001. Employee recognition, $20,600. In the benefit program, $50,925. A total of $71,525 of tax dollars. What do these funds spend on? April, $360 for service awards for four individuals. April, $63 for a birthday cake. March, $700 for retirement gifts for four people. March, $322 for service awards, lunch vouchers for 14 people. March, $95 for a service award, one person. January, $275 for service awards for five people. In my day, you were handed a pen and a piece of paper, not framed. It is time to look at where our tax dollars ought to be spent and on what projects. The individual works for advancement and a fair pension. But at the same time, the cost of rewards needs to be limited to in-house employees in a department or division's own individual funds, not the taxpayers'. Now you see why Doge needs to be developed to find better ways to accomplish the methods of government. Government is like rote in mathematics. Once you get the numbers right, you go down the path of complacency until retirement. I know, I have seen it with my own eyes. Do not rock my boat. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to, Mr. Mauer, is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Heather King. I'm in the Abingdon District. My husband and I have four kids who are either currently in the Gloucester County Public Schools or have recently graduated. As you work on your budget, I'm here to advocate for the Community Engagement Coordinator Program. As someone who's in the schools on a regular basis and has been for 14 years, I think I can say that they're an important and valuable part of our schools and community, not just our schools, but our community as well. I began volunteering at Bethel in 2009 when my kids went to school, and that was facilitated by the Community Engagement Coordinator, who actually organizes all of the volunteers that help in our schools. She does all the vetting, the background check, the application, the tour of the school, the meeting about what it is you might be able to do in the school, and all of the scheduling that's necessary. Ever since then, I have volunteered as a library volunteer, a literacy volunteer in a first grade classroom. I provide lunch duty service when staff members are away. I help with field days, carnivals, other special events. I chaperone on field trips. I am a copy volunteer. I spend hours every week copying papers for teachers. I have a master's degree in education, but I do that because I believe in our schools. And I've also been a pianist for our school choir group and helped them during assessment season. I do a lot of things. And I see what our community engagement coordinators do. They are busy people. And one of the things they do, as I've emphasized, is oversee a massive workforce of volunteers, free labor, in our schools that will free the teachers up to do things in the classroom and with the students. They also are involved in communication, letting the parents know what's happening in the schools, letting the parents know what's happening in the community, send home newsletters, email updates, things like that. They provide enrichment opportunities, like bringing in the All Pro Dad Program, and they have guest speakers, musicians, actors, historians, scientists, the 4-H program, master gardeners, arborists of various kinds, you name it. They bring them into the schools to enrich the programs there. They also work on after-school and before-school programs. They organize study field trips, like the one my son just took to Beaver Dam Park. That was a partnership with the Parks and Rec. They connect needs within the school with help in the community, and this is a unique one. We have kids in our community have food insecurities, they don't have food on the weekends for the free lunches and free breakfasts that they receive in the schools. So it's the Community Engagement Coordinator that tells the local churches how many students might need food on the weekends. And the local churches, like my church, Newington Baptist and Petsworth Baptist, we've adopted Bethel. Every week, we find out how many students might need food on the weekends. We use our resources, our time, our volunteers, and we bring those bags of food in, and they are distributed by the Community Engagement Coordinator. So I want to share with you, as you are budgeting, how important this program is, but also reminds you of the financial sense it makes to pay one person to coordinate volunteers, instead of trying to pay all of us, who are volunteers, to do all that work. And also to remind you, in this day and age, when we are really emphasizing the importance of parents and community engagement in the schools, the person that makes that happen is the Community Engagement Coordinator. I wouldn't be in the school on a weekly basis doing all those things if she wasn't there to facilitate me doing that, and that is how I know what's happening in my son and daughter's school. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Teresa Altimus, and I reside in the Gloucester Point District. I stand before you tonight, I want to talk about, yes, the budget, but I want to bring up several documents that I went digging for and looking at. I don't remember who told me this, and I don't want to blame Mr. Baines, but if I'm wrong, Mr. Baines, I'm sorry, and you can correct me. But I was told at a meeting that the last transfer from the budget, excuse me, from the general fund to utilities department was in 2019. What I found was actually in 2018, and I'm using documents from the board package, and I realize that four of you were not on the board at that time. In 2018, there was a transfer of $430,524. At that time, it was to pay off the reserve. I have a document here that one year before that, it said that you all passed to the board. Again, there were four of you on the board at that time, $125,000 from the Utilities Development Fund Reserve. At that time, when you transferred that money, it was for capacity increase to a pumping station, which of course eventually benefited Fiddler's Crossing, which we all know is down here at the subdivision. And I'm going to read verbatim. At the bottom of your document in your board packet, it said the total available unspent development fund reserves as of June 30, 2016, as audited, were $1.18 million in money. That was in 2016. When you transferred $430,524, nothing, to my knowledge, has been transferred since then. My question to you, and it made me ponder, that's almost seven years of untransferred money, and let's say $3 million. If you multiply 430,524 times seven years, that's just a little over $3 million. Where has that money gone? Has it been absorbed in other places in the budget? At the current rate, that's just over five cent on our tax rate. I would encourage you to go and find that money. Have you put it in, and I'm not being disparaging, whether it's tax increase for salaries for schoolteachers or for county employees, but you should be responsible and provide the leadership to find out where that $3 million plus has gone over a seven-year period. You can't tell me it's just been wrapped into something else. You're going to have to raise taxes if the figures are correct to modernize the current utilities department, $60 to $100 million. It was stated at a previous meeting, I don't want to pay for the water. Well, Mr. Hudson, I agree with you. We all pay for the water, whether we go to a school building, to a restaurant, to Wendy's, wherever we go, we use the public facilities. I do also agree with you that the water from a fire hydrant doesn't go to just a house that pays for water. So I do agree with you. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is, we as taxpayers will pay that money. There's no way that you can fund a $60 million on the low-end project, there's no way, without every taxpayer. If you go, and I got curious, looking at the overlay of where the water lines are, you need to question yourself why they're stumped where they're stumped, and why there's quite a few places that, there's over 6,000 properties that the water lines run by that aren't even hooked up to the water. They put a lien on my house, and I didn't have the water. They forced me to pay for a lien and water I never used. So I don't understand why I was singled out. I'm sure there were others, but that was a whole lot of years ago. Also, I'm curious, which I could not find, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, where are the current record of assets of the utilities department? I think they should be made public so we can see that. Using a document from 2018, bear with me, the income of the utilities fund in 2018 was $6.8 million.
Just can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, and now it's almost in half. Again, where did the money go to? And the one thing I would say, and I will leave you with, it's been said, and we all know that the tolls will go off this bridge at the first of the year. How are you going to put water and sewer to large subdivisions if you don't do something about it now? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Is there anyone else? No one else? Okay, that discloses our public comment period, and we will move on to our work session agenda, budget discussion. Okay, board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, in thinking about the last meeting, a number of items were mentioned that I think, I'm wondering if we could dispel some of them or agree on them so that we can move forward. So for example, there was a discussion on fund balance, which our policy is 14% to 16%. There was some discussion about maybe dropping it to 15.2 to use some of that money to pay for some capital needs. I'm wondering what the board wants to do with developing, where do we want to go with the fund balance? Do we want to drop it to a certain point where we all agree we're not going to go below that? Because, again, the policy is 14% to 16%. What do we do? You know, could we make a decision tonight to dispel any issues about where we're going to go with that? The other was, we agreed there'd be no 3% cut. We also said that we have to decide on whether we want to do a 3% COLA or how we want to do it, do it half, do it 2% plus a raise. So there are some things that I would like to think we could disperse pretty quickly. And the one thing that we haven't discussed at all, I haven't heard, is utilities in the budget. And it's been brought up from numerous people and numerous comments to the email that we have been lax in previous years as to how we help the utilities department. There was the, we quote, "manna from heaven," which is a little over a million. Do we want to use that for utilities or something else? I suggested utilities to help them out. But I'd like to think that we could move forward on some things tonight so we can get down to the issues at hand in terms of what we're going to do with the overall budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I sent an email to our esteemed accountant over here regarding individuals, a total salary base of those individuals who make over $90,000 a year. And the response was, that's over $5.5 million total. I want to ask the question, and I think Ms. Steele made the comment, that if we don't provide COLA increases for those individuals who make $90,000 or more, the state won't pay. I'm not certain that that might be true, and I asked our county attorney to look into that. And, Mr. County Attorney, what did you find out?
Thank you, Mr. Bazani. I conferred with Maria Callaway and did my own thinking as well. And according to Ms. Callaway-
We appreciate that.
Thank you. As feeble as it may be at times. According to Ms. Callaway, there are 47 county employees who make $90,000 or more. And of those 47, the Board of Supervisors could not approve the full COLA for 29 of the 47. If you cannot decline to approve the COLAs for the DSS, Department of Social Services, or the constitutional officers, because to do so would forfeit all of the COLAs for those departments, if you're able to do it at all. So of the 47, the board apparently could do 29 or thereabouts and not give those 29 the COLAs, the Teds, the Carols, the Marias, the Anns, the Erics, the heads of the departments, that neighborhood of individuals. And I was told that the estimate of the savings of doing that would be about $110,000. So if you were not to fund COLAs across the board, and I want to let Maria correct me, I'm sure I've said something wrong, in a second, would be about $110,000. What did I say wrong?
You nailed it.
Sweet. All right, I'm out of here.
I mean, I just wanted to know, you answered the question. It's difficult. We're facing difficult times with this budget, and I just thought maybe this would have been an avenue to pay the lower, pay staff, non-supervisory staff, because they're going to see an increase in their healthcare costs. It would have been, I wanted to know how much we could divert to lower-level staff to accommodate the differential in increased healthcare costs. But it looks like $110,000 is not going to really put a big dent in that expense at this point. So I just wanted to clear that up, and they gave me a bad look over there.
No.
And so I think you've answered it well, and I think I know what the answer is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bazani.
No, I'll save it for later.
Since, I'll just ask another question. So I went through this document that you provided, and I want to thank you very much for what you put into this. It was very helpful. I did link it with the budget book to make sure that the figures here matched here. It was complicated because of what you told us of some of the things that were done with the budget from one department to the other. But with regard to training and career development, when you offer training and career development, let's say career development, because we said we want people to grow and move up the ladder, do we require these people to provide service for a number of years once they pass something, as some places require? You know, if you are offered, you know, let's say, a special way to move up, let's say you get a special certification, do we ask those employees to give X number of years more to the county before possibly moving on to another department, another county?
Mr. Chair, if I can, we do have a personnel policy on training, that if it is a program that is a very expensive program, which could mean a class, it could mean a one-time conference, maybe a national conference, that if it's over, I believe it's $1,500, I have to sign it, not the department head, and they do have to stay. And I apologize, I can't remember off the top of my head exactly what it is, but if they leave before a certain amount of time, they have to reimburse the county. But for normal annual conferences, or to take a class or anything, there is not a payback requirement.
We train people here, and then they see the attractiveness of higher salaries across the river, which we know they are higher. And of course, now with the toll coming off, they don't have to worry about paying the toll, there might be more of an incentive for people to be attracted to York County for higher pay, which we know most of the positions there have higher pay scales than what we have here.
It is a risk, but for most of the trainings that are in that career level, they're not that much money, and you take that chance and you hope that person's going to stay because of the environment they're in, and as much equity as we can provide.
Okay. Okay.
Dr. Orth, to get back to your first question about fund balance. I would not like to, but if we needed to, I would have no problem taking the fund balance back to 14% if we could find a way to start building it back again, or have a plan to get it going back towards a 16%. But that would probably take an extraordinary circumstance, and I don't think necessarily that this budget season is that circumstance. But if we were to do something and have it at 15 this year, and something catastrophic happened, and we needed that money, I would have no problem staying, as long as we're staying above the 14%, I wouldn't have a problem going there.
Well, that was my comment, and as I was thinking about and looking through all the budget stuff this weekend, you know, we've been going back and forth about the 14% to 16%, and I know, again, at our last meeting, we said we would drop it or use some of the money to go to 15.2, correct? So do we want to today make a decision that we're not going to go below 15 and leave it at 15, and use any of that money, that 1% specifically for non-recurring, non-operating items?
Mr. Chair, I would propose that we, at least as a contingency, go down to 15% and see whether or not we will need that additional funding post-discussion on this budget. We may need it, and it wouldn't, I don't think it'll hurt us if we go down to 15%. We've got assessments coming up next year that's going to, you know, obviously raise revenues, and, you know, we're going to make decisions on what the new tax rate would be as a result of the new assessments, and I'm pretty certain that they're going to go up. That will create another source of revenues for the county, but we have to be careful with that as well. We are, you folks don't remember what happened in 1975 when they took the toll off the Coleman Bridge, and I know I was a proponent of taking the tolls off the bridge, would have, should have wished for something different. But between 1975 and 1992, we were the fastest-growing county in Virginia. That may happen again, and we need to think about our comprehensive plan, and what kind of growth do we want to have in this county? Do we want full-blown development coming in, homes coming in, developers coming in, or do we want to restrict what kind of development comes in to keep this county a rural county? Because if not, we're going to turn into a York County, Chesapeake, Isle of Wight, all of those, we'll be looking like them. And that means tax rates go up. And places, and I use Bakosan as an example, resident rich, business poor, their tax rate is twice ours, and they have no businesses in there, and the residents are paying for it. So we just have to think about what we're going to do looking forward as opposed to just looking at this budget. What's this budget? This budget should try to reflect what our future might look like.
Mr. Hudson, a question for you. I know last year, when we were voting on the budget, you were the only person who voted no.
I voted against.
Oh, okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. But I know that there was a question about using fund balance for operating. We aren't, at this point, with that 1% difference of 16 to 15 involving operating, right, it's for one-time expense, okay?
As I said last year, and I'll say it this year, I'm not going to use unassigned fund balance for recurring expenses. It's not wise to do. And if you go back to what Mr. Bazani mentioned earlier, when we had the meeting talking about the comprehensive plan, there was some consensus, or some talk on the Planning Commission of leaving the comprehensive plan as it is right now. But if you look at the comprehensive plan, it's showing for growth and everything else. So maybe the comprehensive plan needs to be gone into a little bit more in-depth than what the Planning Commission is currently thinking about doing, and that was basically the guidance of the board. So it's something that we've got to, I mean, it's in the early stages right now of going over it, but we need to be mindful of where the county could grow and what's, where we're looking at. But that's two points. But to answer your question, I don't want to use any of the unassigned fund balance for recurring expenses.
Well, you know, getting back to the growth issue, Ms. Steele presented to us information on all the land around Gloucester that is available for growth, right? And we were looking at, what, a couple thousand acres that would be available for growth? But, you know, given that, we shouldn't be talking about that now, but I mean, you know, things that we can do that would, I'd say, control growth, but focus growth in the right areas.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to bring up what I was going to bring up earlier. The last elephant in the room is the firehouse. Given the growth that's going to happen in Gloucester County, instead of building one giant pyramid on Main Street, maybe we would consider building two smaller pyramids, three smaller pyramids strategically located throughout the county to accommodate where we think growth is going to happen. I'm still getting a lot of phone calls from folks saying, why is it going on Main Street? Why are we spending $20 to $1 million, which will grow even further, on one place in Main Street where we can, might want to consider looking forward and seeing, especially now with, everybody knows the Coleman Bridge tolls are coming off, and we're going to grow. Perhaps we may rethink where those fire stations should be located.
So, Mr. Bazani, the Fire Department currently owns a piece of land up at Owl Trap. Do you want to know why they have not sought funding to build a firehouse there? They have zero volunteers that can man that firehouse, zero. So they know where their volunteers are, and they know where their call volumes are. And while this station that is being proposed, and that this board has asked that we get funded sooner rather than later, is going on Main Street, and as time dictates, and they have volunteers that can man these stations, then they have another location to already build. The- The other two, Station Four and Station Six, they're built in such a way that they can expand those stations. So the Fire Department is well aware of growth and the plans and how they can serve the public. So I don't have a problem working with them to provide them with the facility that they need because they've been out of compliance in this one probably for the last 10 years with what they have to do.
And I agree with what you said, but I'm afraid we're going to pull the trigger on something that's going to cost us more money than what we thought. They don't even have the design completed yet and when you don't have a complete design, you don't know what it's going to cost. How much completion do they have on the design? 80%? 70%? What do we know about the full, you know, design? I know building ships, we used to design as build. That was a dangerous proposition because every time we started getting to 70% completion, the Navy wanted something different and we would submit claims against the government because of rising costs. You have to have plans that are fully developed, fully planned before you send those things out to contractors to bid on. We don't know what that amount is going to be yet because they don't have it, they do not have it fully designed yet. It's not, I don't even think they have a scope of work yet for bid. What do we know? I mean, we don't know that. It's dangerous to not know that. If you don't have a scope of work for bid documents, we won't know what it's going to cost.
It hasn't gone out to bid, but I think they're probably closer to 90% complete on their documents and I think they will, once they get site plan started, which I don't know if they've gotten that completely in, but before that site plan proceed, process is over, they will have their documents at 100%.
Because the longer we wait, the more expensive this is going to get.
Well.
We all know that because we've talked about it before.
If we had have built it a year ago, or started building it a year ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So with that being said, I would expect sometime in the next three to four months, everything will be complete and ready for bid and that's, that's probably being a little bit generous because it could take up to six months, but I don't expect this, this price to explode or go up much more than, than what we're looking at currently.
Thank you. So are we, are we looking at tying down debt for this facility already? And we're tying down at, what, 21 million?
I'm not sure where the $21 million came from.
Or whatever it's going to.
Seventeen and a half.
Seventeen. I thought it drifted up to 21 million.
No. I know a citizen made that comment last week, it was the first time I've heard that comment.
Okay, so let's say 17 million. I mean, do we know, are we already, you know, latching on to contracts to borrow that money yet?
Can't do that yet.
Well, I just didn't, want to make sure we didn't do the cart before the horse.
Just for clarification, I think this is important. Ms. Callaway was saying the 21 came from the Fire Department with, when you add in the part that they've already paid.
They've already.
That was in purchasing the land and doing the drawings and things that they've done so far, not 21 to borrow.
I'm glad we cleared that up.
Me too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, we had a citizen tonight who raised the issue of the importance of the community engagement personnel at the schools and I know that they perform a valuable function, having kids at the school and hate to put you on the spot, Mr. Hartley, but could you refresh our memory of what the, the request is for those positions or if you maybe could get back to us on, you know, the gap on that issue?
It's a, it's a county position. These are county positions, sorry.
Apologize, I thought it was a school position. Okay, thank you.
Actually.
It's a partnership between the county and the schools. They provide the location and things and then the county provides.
It's actually interesting that you.
The entire community.
I was actually looking at that particular department and I think there are seven full-time employees, right? There's one for each school, correct? And that's, and each person has the responsibility of doing exactly what that young lady said, correct?
Two of the positions are part-time. The two middle schools are part-time and there isn't one at the high school. But there's also Quentin Shepherd as the director of the department and Savannah. So those are the other two that are full-time in addition to the five elementary school full-time coordinators.
It's eight full-time and two part-time.
And I appreciate that woman bringing that because that was something that I looked at and I just wanted to make sure that the number of employees were assigned to schools so that, as the woman said, those people have a lot of responsibility and they're there in many cases at night and on weekends.
And I don't think there's an additional request for them. I think it's, we've, we've had some citizens want to go after that department as a way to reduce our budget.
But wasn't there a request either last year or this year for one at the high school?
There was and we, it was not forwarded to you.
But it wasn't, yes.
It was not recommended.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you said Mr. Gibson. And let's go back a second and it's a concern I have and it's my main concern about the fire station on fire, on the Main Street and that is, we have no idea how long it's going to remain volunteer. Hopefully it's for the life of the building, but if we have full-time staff at that building, it really wouldn't matter as much about response time to the station to get out because the people, the firemen would be living at the station during their shift. So that's something that I think where Mr. Brazani was talking, that's where that concern is coming from. It's not so much the life of the building because it's planned as a 50-year building, but how long the Fire Department is going to be able to continue to perform the services effectively that they are currently doing.
And I, and I agree with your, your premise. I'm not going to be here the next term, but my, my forecast of what will happen once growth starts happening in this county, that our tax rate will probably be somewhere between 70, north of 75 cents per hundred to pay for all of the utilities issues, the, a fully paid staff on the Fire Department, possibly towards 80, 80 cents per hundred within the next five years possibly. Because when we grow fast, it's going to require the support from, from our infrastructure, from our own county, county operations to do that. So again, we need to be careful what we wish for and, and as you said, Mr. Hudson, looking at our comprehensive plan and maybe tweaking it to adjust it to, you know, and we need to let the citizens know, do we want the county to grow fast or do we want the county to remain a rural county? And so I think the citizens ought to have some input as well because a lot of people moved to Gloucester County for the simple reason is that we are rural and I have a hard time saying that word, rural. Must be the Italian in me, but, but, so we need to consider that. So I can see our tax rates go up to 80 cents in five years.
Also want to put in a shameless plug for the Planning Commission. We're looking for citizen volunteers that want to be on the comprehensive plans, I don't want to say steering committee, but guiding to help that, it's a group to come out and give their opinions from each of the districts on the comprehensive plan. So if you're out there watching and you want to do it, come join us. Put your name in the, what is it? Volunteer bank.
Mr. Chair, I think the discussion of the Fire Department, we're well past that point where we need to move forward and just get it done and there's nothing we can do. They've done everything they could to get us to this point. As Mr. Crisco said last year, yes, but we aren't, we're here now and any further discussion is really, not really relevant because we're 99.99% ready to roll on giving them the money for the firehouse.
Mr. Nikosia.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to go Dr. Oorth on you for a minute because I've been sitting over here minding my Ps and Qs. So we'll start with the Fire Department, working my way back. Fire Department, we have, we have gave our support to them as a board. I agree with Dr. Oorth, Mr. Crisco, that we, the ball has been launched. So we need to, and he is correct, that not only were they looking at the courthouse, but they have an additional location and room to expand in their other locations and it's time to move on this project. And yes, Mr. Brazani, you're right, the longer we wait, the more the price is going to go up. I don't disagree with that. All right, so that's, that's my take on that and I haven't changed my stance, I don't, I don't intend to. Number two, I agree with Mr. Hudson. Here's my analogy on this about fund balance. Fund balance is, to me, I equate that to, it's on a sign, it's there if you need it, okay? But if you keep drawing from it and you don't put anything back, eventually you're going to draw it down to an area that you can't come back from. So although I agree that at times it might, that might be the only option, we need to be careful when dipping, that we don't dip so much that we don't have the financial means or something catastrophic was to take place. And, and also looking at doing my own studying, I, I didn't see where, I saw where 3% cut to the departments actually hurt the department. It hurt the departments and it's going to hurt, to me, it's going to hurt customer service because if you have to start eliminating folks and then our defined citizens of Gloucester go to these departments to get things done and they can't get things done because positions were eliminated because of budget cuts, then they're going to come back to us and say, how come we can't get things done? So we're walking a very fine line and we, I think we need to, to think out every decision that we make from here till we get our budget passed.
Thank you, Mr. Nikosia. Ms. Steele, are we required to have a certain amount in the fund balance?
It's your board policy to have.
It's your board policy to have and the board policies to have.
14 to 16%.
14 to 16%.
And that's one, I'm going to let her say, add something, but I was just going to say from borrowing and the interviewing and the steps and the things that they do to see where we are on that is, are we following our policy?
And I just wanted to add that per the policy, it says 15% is the minimum required to safeguard our fiscal liquidity. So we would, even though there's some leeway of that 14 to 16%, we don't want to consciously budget in anything less than 15%.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, we've been dancing around these numbers. We need to look at the numbers because we're faced with the proposed 4.3 cent tax increase and we've been throwing numbers back, fund balance, the man from heaven, the Fire Department. We need to look at the numbers so we can debate where we want to go with the overall budget and what it's going to take to balance the budget and how much of a tax increase that is going to incur.
That's a simple solution, just adopt the budget as the county administrator proposed. That's a simple solution. What do we want to cut?
Well, there's two different things. You've got to remember after last Monday's meeting, or during last Monday's meeting, we added almost a million dollars to the budget over the county administrator's proposed budget between the Chromebooks, the meals for the schools and the 38, $37,000 for civic groups. So we're right at a million dollars added over the four, over the 4.3%.
And that was one of the attachments that Maria sent us.
It, it's probably too late to do this now, but, you know, cutting heads is the simple way to cut costs. I mean, it's the simplest way. Cut, cut ahead, you cut cost. No one wants to talk about any kind of process improvements, taking an inner look at our processes and see where can we become more streamlined, what processes can we do without, without cutting heads? What, what efficiencies we can get from consolidating some certain things within the county? I know you said you produce ship buildings that are for profit, but we did, we did process improvements to cut expenses as well, not to, not to make more profit, but to cut expenses because the Navy required us to do that. So I have always said, cutting heads is a myopic way of adjusting your budget. Looking at process improvements is probably the smarter way. What can we consolidate? What can we do without, without having to, and reshuffle the staff that we have with what's left over?
Mr. Chair, if I can, I want to make sure that the public understands that our value statement for employees, we do look at process improvements continuously and Mr. Wright is, I think, gold belt or whatever, Six Sigma trained. He just led an exercise for the whole three departments on the second floor to look at how we can improve the process for getting all of our permits. We continually look at cross-training staff. We are in the mode of not having enough people routinely and so we are constantly looking at how we can improve the process because the person who usually does something may not be there and we have to be able to react. And so I just, the board may choose to not offer services that are not mandated and I'm personally not hearing that but from a couple of citizens and hear a lot the other way personally, myself, but there are things that you can do in county government, I mean, that you do provide that are not mandated. However, they, again, in my opinion, make Gloucester as special as it is, but I wouldn't want the community to think that we have excess people or that we don't routinely look internally to how we can improve our services, doing things like putting online forms, being able to pay online. We're continually doing that. There hasn't been any FATs so we are very creative and always digging and searching. And when y'all are ready, Ms. Callaway has made some adjustments to the chart that for the public to understand, maybe just to introduce how it's a little bit different so that you can see the totaling and have, you know, your options, so maybe she could explain what you can do if that's appropriate.
They want comment about what you just said in terms of a group I know, which is utilities, and talking with those people across the river, you have a separate water and a separate sewer department. Our people do both and they cross-train, they do it, and when, when people are needed in one spot, they move around. You know, we don't have that luxury for utilities, you know, we have, we need more people, we can't get them. We can't get people to apply for jobs in utilities. It's been mentioned numerous times, we need more people. We can't even get good people into this position here in the county and we've got, it's a very difficult task of running the water and sewer system and, you know, the people I know, they work and they're always usually available overtime on jobs that come in many times at night, middle of the week, weekends, and they do a very good job of keeping the system running. It's not perfect, we've made a lot of mistakes in the past, but I think we are trying to address those and it's been brought up to us numerous times by a number of individuals who have written to us. We are trying to do better and I think we will, but it's tough trying to bring in good people when our salaries are so low compared to what they are across the river when they do less for more money.
We, we need to be careful because once that toll come off, they may decide they want to go that way.
Okay. I was talking with an employee and we joke, I jokingly said something to her about, she lived across the river. And do you roughly, does anybody want to guess roughly what it costs for 50 weeks a year with easy pass coming across, coming back and forth across the bridge?
400 and some odd dollars.
$212.50. Per year. So, because I joke, I jokingly said to her that with, if any increases, we could drop their pay and I said, to make it easy on staff, let's make it 213 and she jokingly agreed. And she jokingly agreed. But it's 200, at 50 weeks a year, one trip across at 85 cents is $212.50. So, yes, I see, I know what happened back in the 70s when the toll came off. I think there's going to be more people coming, but I don't think it's going to be as crazy as what it was back in the 70s.
Sorry to use this analogy, we're just, no, I'm not going to do it.
We're just...
No, I'm not, it's, it's, it's going to, no, it's going to take, people will take it the wrong way. We are, we are just an infant county, when you consider the rural character of this county. We're an infant, or maybe a young human being that's going to be taken advantage of by these developers that will come in here to develop, 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 and develop. We are ripe for development if this, this toll happens.
Where, where are they going to develop that is served by water and sewer?
They're going to dig a well.
This, this, okay, so...
Dig a well.
They're going to dig a well.
Dig a well.
So...
They just did two behind my backyard.
On five acre lots, or, or depending on what the zoning is for that district, you think that all of a sudden, a big developer who's wanting to shove as many homes into the smallest footprint that they can, is going to magically come over here and want to build 100 homes on 500 acres of land? And dig wells for all of them?
We have, we have...
And then put in...
We have developments. I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's, it's not, this development craze that you're looking for, or you say is coming, it's...
It's coming.
I, I don't know where, because I spent the first quarter of my career building homes. And where we were building them in this county, those types of areas no longer exist. There, that land is just not like it, we have enough changes in here that I don't see, we have a couple of pockets, but the development that you're, you're speaking of, like what you're seeing in, in areas in Newport News, and, and James City County, and York County, where they have water and sewer, those, those large areas don't exist here.
If I can, just to remind...
If I could just make one, one comment, one comment.
Sorry, it's your meeting, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So, so, I mean, I drive up to West Point, you know, go through, what's the road that goes through West Point?
33.
Thank you. Lots of land out there, and we already told these farmers they can't build solar farms there anymore, because we limited to 2% or whatever the percent was. And some developer will come back there and offer them good money for that land, there's lots of land to be developed in Gloucester County. Hundreds of acres of lots of land to be developed, you'll see. We are ripe for development, I'll say that one time.
Mr. Steel? I'm in the middle on this, but I do want to provide a fact to, to remind you all that 49% of our land is in land use. That includes over 1,000 acres, prime middle of the county, on water and sewer, but it's currently in land use. So to me, the biggest threat we have of big development is somebody getting enough of an offer that they choose to, to sell it and pay those back taxes, which are not that much, and that's, as I've stated in retreat meetings, the thing that concerns me the most about that too, are the generational changes. That it might be that the person who's done this for years isn't going to be controlling that property, it might not be in the next five years, but that's where I think our greatest risk is.
Do we know what that 1,000 acres is currently zoned? For proper, proper development, we'd probably have to come before this board, as a form of a CUP anyway, or a rezoning. So there lies our ability to control what happens in this county. It's Government 101, it's why we run, it's why we're elected, it's why we sit up here and make these decisions based on what the Planning Commission sends to us, and it's, it's what we've been doing, it's what I've been doing for the last 13 years. So that's what we get paid the big bucks for. We do the big boy things, big, big girl things when we sit up here, so I'm prepared to do it.
A balancing act for you all, I hope that the citizens understand that too, even the ones who are anti... If you do not grow, you die. You know, we've got older generations, if we don't have new people coming in, we already know that our real estate revenue is going down. If we don't do a tax increase, our revenue is going down. The ghost town effect can't, we don't want that to happen, so you all have this really difficult job of how much business, what type of business, how many homes, but if there's not some additional growth, then the Pacoson situation, the, the real estate situation where everybody's taxes go up because there's not any new. The additions of subdivisions that go on water and sewer, they pay into that development fee. So there's some times where development is good, and, and that's again where I hope more citizens will want to volunteer. It is, nobody has a crystal ball, and you all have a very hard job of deciding when those rezoning requests come to you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hudson.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Ms. Steel, but I think there's also one other wrinkle to that, is that not only would it be new homes, but also the value of existing homes. And that can enhance our tax base, and that's where the value of an outstanding school system, the value of an excellent parks and recreational system, the amount, the value of services makes our community more attractive and can lead to a higher value of homes. But we, we do have some in the community who consistently speak out against providing funds to parks and recreation, or allocating funds to certain school, infrastructure needs, and things like that, and so I think we need to keep that in mind moving forward, that those are the types of things that can keep our county rural and have that small-town feel, but enhance the value of our existing homes. So just something to think about as we move forward with these types of decisions, when we make decisions about schools, and infrastructure, and parks and rec.
Is it not, is my correct, I'm just trying to think of the Weldon Cooper studies that have been done for growth. If I remember correctly, they were forecasting growth for Gloucester of between 150, 200 people a year, something like that? I think, so we are going to grow, it's a question of how fast we're going to grow.
It has slowed down. We did not meet what we were anticipated to meet the last time, so we have seen a slight decline. But, and, and we've also experienced that with our building permits and things. I don't think that's a long-term situation, but it has happened.
I'm, I am going to, I'm going to stick with the 4.3 percent. I don't know, you know, if we, if we raise taxes another 2 cents, and as I said before, I'm going to have pitchforks and torches in my house coming up with people that don't want further tax increases. And I'm really not comfortable with this 4.3, but we have a firehouse we need to build.
That 4.3 does not reflect any funding for the firehouse.
Okay, so none of it. Okay, so I'm still, I'm still in support of the 4.3, or cut it if we can in some way, some smart way, without losing heads.
So we have some numbers sitting up on the screen and on the board, so are we going to look at those, or what are we going to do, guys? We also had an interesting comment regarding the manna from heaven, about are we going to do anything with that, or not?
I thought the last thing we, I thought the last thing that was mentioned about that was holding off until after the audit to determine what was actually available.
Actually see what the actual amount be by the collections you'll get on June 30th, which will reflect the new tax rate? I mean, it's an easy thing to do, right?
Yes, but we have to develop the budget now.
I know.
So we won't know.
But, but we've already said that we won't include that additional revenue in our current budget. It's going to be left somewhere else.
But you've got to remember, there's not 100% collection in June.
It's half, it's half of it.
No, there's not even 100% collection of the half. It's what, 87% or something?
87%, so you can estimate that. You can estimate 87%, or 85% even, say, okay, we're going to, we can at least estimate what we're going to get on June 30th, at 85%. What do we do with that money? Do we use it to offset taxes here? Or do we just put it in capital? What do we do?
Well, in the presentation that we had on Monday, there was a page that said that if we wanted to use that money, we could drop the tax rate to 2.9, if we use that proposed amount, correct? That's, I think, one of the sheets that we had from last Monday.
Yes.
But then we had argued also that the money could be used for utilities or something else, which I said utilities.
I think, back to Dr. Ors' original questions when we started here, and that is, we need to figure out where, I mean, with the money that was added last week, we need to figure out where we are, if there's any other cuts, any other thoughts we want to do, and then adjust the budget from there. See where the rate needs to be. Are there any items in here that people think are too high, people think are too low? What are the, what are the board members think? Where cuts need to be done? Because where we're looking at things right now, you know, looking at the number of Chromebooks that the schools presented, I understand that after four years, that 80% of them were still usable, but I think it's kind of silly, from my point of view, to put a $100 service plan on a $300 device. In the scheme of things, money-wise, I thought that was, you know, extremely high for a warranty for it. But if we're going to, do we need to do the whole amount this year? Do we do half and half and half, and a quarter, quarter? That's where I'm looking at where the numbers need to be, looking at it that way. That's where we need to get into.
Mr. Chair, right now, if you look at column C, no, I, sorry, I comes after B in this one, you are at 63 and a half cents with the additional changes that you proposed, unless you do modify, either changing something that is in there, or modifying your revenue source.
So we went from 4.3 to 5.2, correct?
You went to 6 point, .63.
63.
To 5.2 penny increase. So if I, would it help if I explained a little bit about this spreadsheet real quick? Okay. So I have to do this for myself every year, so, and if it's too small, please let me know, and I can zoom it in. So we have started, I've kind of hidden off to the side here, this is just the, the county administrator's proposed budget is going to be in this column here. This is just the difference from 25 to 26. So we can certainly look at that as much as you need, but I'm not going to look at that for this. Revisions here, these revisions are revisions that the county administrator and staff have made as we're working through the budget, and I provided that, a full list of those via email over the weekend. There's also a couple of carryovers that we added today, so I have a list of those to provide, but those, again, no net tax impact there, everything here is a zero, zero impact on the tax rate. So what we really are going to focus on is right here, as Ms. Steel just mentioned, column I. And so in these yellow boxes, this proposed tax rate takes into consideration our current rate plus any changes we make. So this 50, this .052 cents here, that is assuming we use $487,000 of additional real estate tax revenue to balance those changes that you made at your last work session. So if we take that number out, so whenever I change this number, it will change what that tax impact is. So now you can see you're off by 487, that's what you need to balance, and you're still at the 4.3 penny tax increase that was recommended from the beginning. Now I've also added a row here for personal property, because you did advertise that higher rate, and so if you choose to make changes to the personal property rate, or you want to play with that, we can change that here, and that will show up in these yellow boxes over to the side. Right now, where this stands is that we have added in the additional 37,000, it was actually 17,370 was the number to get the Humane Society back up to that $97,000 number. So the additional $37,000 in civic contributions, and then an additional $976,000 to the schools, and then we used to fund that, because this is all expenses down here, all the funding sources are at the top here above this gray line, we used so far $526,000 of unassigned fund balance, which is, takes us to that percentage we discussed on whatever night we were here last.
Monday.
Monday night. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to explain, but hopefully that helps.
So the 526 knocks us down to 15, too?
Yes, and I actually have a worksheet for fund balance as well, if we decide that you want to dig into that at all. But you can see here that I've plugged that number in to the calculation, and this 15.2 is where we would be. And this is just simply the same spreadsheet you've seen on fund balance with the additional figure.
What other opt, what, and I'm, I'm drawing a blank, and I've got all of my papers here.
Yeah.
What are the other items that we're currently have funded with unassigned fund balance? Is there one of these that I can look in quickly to find? Because I...
Yes, but let me, yes, hold on. All right, CIP, Pago.
While, while she's looking for that, again, I'm looking at Chromebooks, I think the schools last time gave us an estimate of 399. I'm looking here at Walmart. Walmart sells Chromebooks for $179 apiece. Are they procuring Chromebooks through the state? Because if you procure through the state, it's going to cost $1,000 apiece.
No.
They gave us some spreadsheet.
He told us.
Where did they get their estimate from?
Straight from the people they buy from.
He told us that last week, what did he?
It was, it was 599, I thought it was, per copy.
It's, it's 330 is currently what the schools have, and then $30 for...
Insurance?
$30 for contract for the, the Chromebook, and then it's an additional $100 for the insurance.
Yeah, that was one of the attachments, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Well, then that gets us to that number then. Um, go ahead, Ms. Callaway, you want to answer a question?
Yes. So the, I don't remember at which, in which presentation this was, or if it was an email, the 4,93,000 that you see here in use of fund balance is, includes $250,000 of fund balance from committed funds, so that's not unassigned fund balance. The other 3.843 million is made up of 2.99 million of originally provided Pago projects. To list the big ones, that's the school buses at 1.3, county paving program at 500,000, Beaver Dam dock and bridge replacements at 1 point, at 293,000, and several others, battery backup replacement E911. And then we moved the Tyler project that would replace the financial software from a proposed debt fund, funding to Pago, so that's another 866,000. We adjusted one, one project, which was the network equipment cost by 22,000 down, so 2.99 million was the Pago projects proposed by Ms. Steel in the original CIP presentation, plus the 866 for the financial software, minus the 22,000 for the reduction in that network equipment, gives you 3.8 million. Do you want this, Mr. Steel? Would that help?
Yeah, just a second, I'll be right back.
Oh, I'm sure I have copies.
So in, in the budget that we have right now, you have used that .8% of the fund balance, correct, from 16 to 15.2? That's in there now, in this spreadsheet?
In this spreadsheet, yes. This spreadsheet takes unassigned fund balance to 15.2%.
Because of the, because of the Chromebooks.
Because of the Chromebooks.
And that gets our tax rate to what?
That leaves our, well, if we were to balance the rest of the budget on real estate taxes, which is mainly the food service, the additional funding to food service, that would be an additional .9 pennies, so that would take our tax rate up by 5.2 pennies.
So if we were to...
So if we were to go the advertised, excuse me, if we were to go the advertised personal property rate.
Was that advertised at, hold on, I have it, 15 cents.
15 cents.
All right, so let me see. I use all my, I think it was actually an additional 692. Excuse me while I play with, have my sidebar things over here. Oh, did I have a bad spell? There we go, yes, I'm so sorry about the movement here. Okay, so that would give us, if we went all the way up, is that what you were saying? That would give us 692,000?
And then if we took the money out of fund balance?
Oh, we, I mean.
No. Take the 526 out. And so we could lower that number by the 166.
Give you 4.9, that is not adding right, so let me grab that real quick. No, it's not right either, hold on. What am I trying to do here? .0295. 295, it should be.
Personal property tax.
Oh, I see, it's D5. There we go. There we go, look at that. Oh, my gosh, I don't know how Trish works on this mouse.
So we would be, if I read this, at 4.9?
Yes.
And you may have already said this, but the, we're at 15.2 on the fund balance, what is that .2 amount?
Math on TV here, all right, so 15.2, if we were to do our.
Since we have the chief financial officer of the schools, right, correct here tonight? Have you all done a study, we talked about school lunches last time? Have you all done a study on means testing school lunches to cut costs?
Good evening, we have not done a formal study of the means testing, but we have had conversations with the Virginia Department of Education, and when we were to, if we were to go to means testing for the free lunches, we would expect some families to continue to not pay, and also to have some fund balance issues when it comes to the food services. So we don't know what that will potentially cost us, but we do know it would be a financial impact for us.
Oh, it is 450, yeah, $450,000.
The .2 is 450,000.
I'm sorry, the .2 is 339,467. Yes, a fun, if we were to take fund balance down to 15% even.
I just, they were talking about taking that out of.
I think I was just responding to Mr. Gibson's question of what the .2, but you need the two together.
Mr. Nicosia.
Ms. Hall, I've got a question for you.
I'm not.
The Chromebook as it stands right now, is that, was that a lump sum? So, so, so we wouldn't be looking at replacing Chromebooks for several years if we bought a lot at one time?
This, Mr. Durin might be able to add to it, but this, this would not replace all of them, this will just get the first.
This one third.
One third is what he had said, yes.
And when would the next, when would the next third have to be replaced?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of these were purchased with COVID money and different, that's her money, I should say, American Relief Fund or whatever, but they were, you know, bought and lumped some, so some of them are up to four or five years old, some of them are three or four years old, so they're going to start aging out as we cycle through.
It was mentioned.
Every year, every other year, Mr. Durin, what do you, what do you project?
Probably every year, we will look at this cost. So we, they, they bought them all at once, so they're all going to go bad at once, so we're trying to prevent, you know, all the Chromebooks going bad all at once, we want to go through and replace them.
Wasn't that in the spreadsheet you had, a year by year by year, it was 526, 526, for four years in that spreadsheet?
I don't remember the specific numbers, Mr. Durin may have prepared that spreadsheet, so he may know, know better, but I didn't think it was the same amount every year, but I could be wrong.
I think it was a flat amount, I didn't prepare it, but I think it was about.
It was different amounts.
It was a fluctuating.
Scenarios that we will go through.
And that's because it had different schools, different ages, and that's why it's not the same. So I guess it was approximately a third or something, but I know that there was question about elementary versus high school and priorities and things.
And so each, each Chromebook has a $100 service fee on it, or is, what is that?
We'd have to get back to you, I'm not quite sure.
Why $100?
$100 warranty.
Warranty.
ADP warranty.
I do know it's a four-year warranty, we can get some more information about exactly what it covers. I do understand some kids can be kind of hard on the Chromebook, so it might cover kind of anything that might happen to the Chromebook, but we can get some more information for you.
So if they abuse the Chromebook, we, they don't pay? They don't pay for, to fix it?
Well, some families, they are paying, but what they're, what we're using, the money that we collect from the families is to actually help support the Chromebook replacement, just, it's a lot of Chromebooks we have to replace at one point in time, so I think that fund in the school activity funds is maybe $70,000, it doesn't cover the full amount for the amount of Chromebooks we need to replace.
It's minor, but it's really not. On the spreadsheet that we were given, it said for full Chromebook cost, 460, but when you did all the calculations out, it was cost for device of $470. Was that just a typo all the way across, or what?
I'd have to double check, I do know there's a $30 license to use.
$30 license, it's $330 for the Chromebook, $30 for the license, and $100 for your ADP warranty was 460. But in the calculations that you used, your, the schools used, was $470 for each Chromebook.
After sourcing, sourcing the Chromebooks at Walmart for 179, and then adding all the other things.
I mean, we don't know if it's the same.
It is.
Memory or whatever else.
It is.
Okay.
I mean, these kids aren't programmers, they're not going to be programming, you know, E equals M squared on these Chromebooks, they're just doing simple, simple problems, but I don't know if you're.
Is there a difference because of the limits of what a child can do with the Chromebook? Like, in other words, it's an educator's Chromebook, so that you're blocked and all those kind of things that you wouldn't have if you went and just bought a Walmart Chromebook?
I'm going to step outside my comfort zone for a bit and talk about IT, but I know there's some security issues, I know there's some processing speeds and memory capability differences, I don't know what you're looking at at Walmart, but I think it's a different machine.
You do have safety features on them, you do have, you do have safety features on them.
Something they won't get at home anyway, right?
Right.
On their own computers. So you're worried, we're worried about it in the school system, but they got a home computer that can access all these other things that they might want to look at.
Right.
No big deal.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may finish my, whatever, where I was going with that. I looked at the spreadsheet, my question, to follow up to my question is, this Chromebook, I know we got it broke down one year, two year, three year, four year, but it's going to recycle back over again, so this is, this is going to become a recurring cost, and, and, and that's, so I, so that's why I asked, just to make sure my mind was going right, that that's not, we're not buying them all at one time, this is, every year we're buying a third, when we get that third, when we get all four of those thirds, then we're going to have to start working on the next go around.
What do you do with the ones that you recycle, where do they go?
Elementary.
The ones that.
Elementary.
Really?
How complicated can a Chromebook use for an elementary school child be?
Mr. Bizani, let me say this, you wait a couple of years, and you're going to get your phone, and you're going to hand it to your granddaughter and say, can you fix this for me?
They're already doing that.
Okay. That's probably why they need it more than we do.
I'm already asking my five-year-old to fix my phone, so she knows how to use it better than I do.
All right, thank you, Danny.
Ms. Callaway, based on, if you go back to the other sheet, workbook. I mean, we've got it balanced right there with everything, with what's been requested, and where, are there any things, and this was using, raising the personal property tax up, a little bit of an increase on real estate, but is there anything else that the board wishes that we include or delete, or anything else while we're here, what we're looking at?
I mean, this is, as I think Mr. Crisco said, this is where we need to pull on our big girl pants and show where we make our money. This is where we get the opportunity.
So I want to make sure we are using 1% of the fund balance in this.
Right here, zero.
Wait.
Right where she has it on the screen right now is zero, because she raised the personal property tax up 15 cents, and then it was a 4.9 cent increase.
So all this went away then, all this use of unassigned fund balance?
Oh, no, no.
Right, so we're still using quite a bit of fund balance.
But it wasn't, I meant, the additional, to knock us down to 15.2.
So that 1% went away, but it's there if we want to use it to get back to 4.3.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So if we went 4.9 to 4.3, which is the proposed rate, how much of that fund balance would we need from 16 to 15, what? To get it to 4.3 is .4, .5 pennies. .05 pennies. So if we went to 4.3, what, what do we need to go back to 4.3?
Out of fund balance, you mean?
How much do we need to go?
320, is that right?
Yeah, the 320.
Where, where would that put the fund balance? Using the 320, as far as percentage left?
32940. 15, 15.4%.
Okay.
And we're not going to touch the manna from heaven, right?
The manna from heaven just got bigger. Because you raised personal property tax as well, so there's going to be even more manna from heaven than what was discussed last Monday.
Could you explain that for the public's benefit?
So when you collect this tax revenue on July, June 30th, you're going to be paying these taxes going all the way back to January 1. So what you've been paying was 50, hold on, let me do the math, 58.3 and 295. So there will be a cash infusion on June 30th of extra revenue, because we have to balance the budget for fiscal '26, which is July 1 of '25 to June 30 of '26. That's what we're building our budget for. And once you get that, whatever is in excess of what you need that you have collected for those first six months becomes the manna from heaven or a cash infusion that we then need to figure out what to do with.
It's, it's the differential between what you thought you paid at 4.59%, 58.3, that differential from 58.3 to 60, what is it? 62.6? That's that additional increment that you're collecting above what you would have intuitively said, well, no, I'm paying taxes on the 53, 58.3, but no, we're going to collect that money starting January 1, and we're going to collect that incremental amount on June 30th, which is why I asked the question, why can't the effective rate be July 1, which would eliminate the whole issue of manna from heaven, period, but it requires a policy change, I understand, is that an ordinance change?
Change to calendar year versus fiscal year.
We, I'm sorry, we can do a forecasting, but, and that was listed as an option of doing that, but there's a risk to that, that if we're wrong, and, and so to, I think, we're in the situation that we're in so often because we haven't had enough, and so it just sort of backlogs on us. I think if the board wants to include in your resolution or a separate resolution that any additional funds collected above the anticipated revenue for the FY '25, real estate and personal property tax, will specifically be spent on capital projects. I mean, we do that anyway because that's how we fund our capital projects is how, with fund balance, but if, because it is more than the normal amount of what you don't spend, and maybe a little bit more than you collected, it will be more, but I, there are so many things that you all have not funded, and whether that you decide in July or October, however long you wait, if you want to do something for utilities, if you want to do something, you know, for other capital projects. So I think if the, to me, the happy meeting is to let the citizens know, yes, those money, those funds will be used wisely. If you do the choice of lowering the tax rate, you're kind of throwing the dice of what gets collected, and then you're still going to be short of capital funds because we never have enough capital funds.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen.
So where are we at 4.3? How do we get to 4.3, which is the.
We're at 4.3.
Add it now because you added in the personal property tax increase as well.
This pays for the, this includes the Chromebooks?
And it uses a little bit of fund balance, 300 and some thousand dollars in fund balance.
Sorry, I'm just triple checking.
321,000 in additional fund balance, based on the county administrator's proposed budget. And, you know, as I'm sitting here, the reason that I was looking at, the reason I, because I made the proposal to advertise these rates, what I did, was so that we could possibly reduce the real estate ask, and then offset that with personal property, and now we're going all in on everything. So with that said, if we are looking at doing this, and it shows total general fund revenue, and I believe that's an increase in J14, 1.013, so that's additional.
From the CA proposed, so are you looking at additional over fiscal year '25?
Well, right, so this is more, a million dollars more than what was proposed?
Yes, this is the changes between the fiscal year, the fiscal year '26 CA proposed budget, and these are only showing the Board of Supervisors revisions.
So that's an additional million before the manna from heaven?
That is an additional million to fund 976,000 for the schools and 37 additional.
Right, those are the schools and the.
To the nonprofits.
Yeah, it's not the extra, it's just balancing what the other items that you added.
So is the school meals and the Chromebooks? So is the school meals and the Chromebooks?
That gets us to 4.3.
Can you remind us of the value of a penny, just for calculation purposes?
568.45. It's right there. Go back to your other screen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crisco.
Are we settled?
Okay. Where, where are we doing?
Mr. Crisco, I sense something that you wanna say but you don't wanna say. I mean, say it. I mean, we've got...
Well, we're, we're sitting here and we're at 4.3, we advertised 6. I mean, y'all might as well go ahead and shoot the moon and, and, and do the whole works. I mean, at this point, I mean, we have looked at cutting absolutely nothing out of this budget from the county administrator's proposal, absolutely nothing. All we've done is continue to feed the machine. You know, it's great and wonderful that we got these Chromebooks the way that we did, but here we are, we're looking at starting to replace them, but it's our responsibility to replace them. The, the schools knew this day was coming when they accepted the money to, to start buying these things and now we're here footing the bill.
And we told them that, too.
The other thing, we, we, we look at with their bus allocation, I mean, we were able to get like 19 buses. And, you know, they're looking at, how do we get buses and fleet? We didn't even discuss, you know, hey, we can take one less bus and handle your fleet vehicles. You know, I don't, I don't know if they need, I don't remember what the number of the buses, amount of buses that they were, but I, I think that number's probably a little aggressive. Because I remember way back when we first got on this board, we raised the personal property 30 cents, and that number got us three buses a year. And I think we did it for two years, and now we need that money for something else. We have done nothing to offset from the county, which I'm assuming will do with, with the manna from heaven that just got a whole lot bigger. Because whatever these tax, whatever these rate payers are being forced, being forced, the rate payers are being increased. Not only are they being increased, now they're also getting more taxes. So we are sitting here and we have still yet again neglected the utilities. And to me, we should be matching whatever those rate payers are paying. The county should match again to get us caught up to what Raftalus needs, needs us to be and also to get us to the point that we can get this utilities department back under control and fixed. And we haven't looked at any of it.
I'm sorry, I looked at that Raftalus report. My, my sophomore finance people can do a better job than they did on that. They just did a simple, simple exponential growth.
Then they should have applied to present us the Raftalus report.
So we haven't talked about... So we haven't talked about utilities at all? Other than we know it's in desperate need of cash. So what do we do?
If I can, one of the, the concerns that I have and that we've been talking staff-wise is that we, we know we have so many capital needs and like using the, the, the windfall funds or the manna from heaven could potentially help with utilities. Anything in that should be one-time spent, just like fund balance. But we also have a lack of staffing. And when we first did the proposal a couple of years ago, we had one staff to be added next year. And that's, that position in proposed operating is still there. But one of the things that Ms. Legg has heard and, and Mr. Baines has heard over and over again is we really should be at a 24-hour operation. And we're not, we don't need to be there yet, but we should be because it's like a compressor, you're turning it on and off and if you keep the machine going, you do better. And, um, we don't have enough staff and even if that one person who's supposed to come on to help at the water treatment plant, that's not enough. Ms. Legg's gonna need three people, just for that part. That doesn't include all the field things and all the distribution lines and things that have to be fixed and, and maintenance. So, um, I just wanna raise that concern so when it comes up again, or if you all wanna discuss it, to, to realize that it's not just a capital problem, but we have a operating problem keeping our capital going. And as the new homes come on, um, which I understand we're back to calling it the villas again, so those of us who never got comfortable with reserves can go back to the villas. As that has been moving forward, there's gonna be additional water quantity needed and we're gonna have to start operating more. And I am, I think we're all very concerned as to how that's gonna happen, but that is not solved by one-time money.
I mean, it's easy. It's already been decided that, that utility users are gonna pay it. It just raised the damn rate again.
The, the other thing that's not contemplated in here is there are two payments. If we were to borrow money, September for the fire department, based on Davenport, we're about 750 to 775,000 dollars in cash short for two payments.
We, all the things we've done, we're okay until the next year. We don't have to pay anything this year.
No, but even in their report that they just gave us, the last time they were here, there was one year it was 100 and some odd thousand, the next year after that it was 500 and some odd thousand. There were two payments that we would have to cash fund. I don't remember the exact amounts. I'm carrying an encyclopedia worth of presentations with me. So there, there's money there that we also have to contemplate that, that's not being contemplated in, in, in any of this. And it doesn't, that doesn't have to be contemplated this year. And then the last question that I have is, we have a transfer that goes to the jail. And at some point, that's supposed to stop. What is the date of that? Because that's just straight up operating revenue. That is not debt service.
I know it's in the CIP. I'll have to, we'll have to look that up for just a moment, but it's, it's not right around the corner, but it is getting closer. We are experiencing much higher medical bills and so the, the jail board is kind of warning all of us that unless the medical situation gets changed, everybody's gonna be looking at paying something where it's always, it's been for over 30 years, they haven't had to make a payment. And they want it to stay that way, but I'm just, they're kind of telling us we've got to be prepared for that.
Right, but that should be a far cry from the 400 and some odd thousand dollars that we're currently transferring for their, um, their money. So I, I would like to know when that is project, what that projection is.
It's 31 or 32 and she's gonna check for us.
Mr. Crisco, um, so you mentioned something just recently that we hadn't done anything at all with the budget presented to us by Ms. Steele regarding county stuff. And, um, I'm trying to figure out where your comment would go if we looked in detail at every one of these pages, which I was trying to think, okay, you know, we've been on the board for quite a few years and generally going back to the previous county administrators, the most significant change I remember that Mr. Fadores made was using, um, money that was not spent for salaries or whatever, that one-time payment was transferred over and over. And I remember Mr. Fadores using some kind of comment about how close we were to, I don't know, we, I can't remember the comment, but... What?
And solvent. We couldn't pay bills for seven hundred days.
And so, you know, in looking at this budget, I mean, in terms of, you know, departments, we've been looking at these department budgets year after year. They're as lean as they can be. I don't know what you're suggesting that we could do differently from what Ms. Steele has presented in terms of here. I mean, we've been looking at these numbers, you know, ever since she made the presentation, you know, to us and, well, did the two-on-two to where we are today, and I'm trying to think, you know, I've been, you know, trying to balance this with what she had here. What do we cut out of it when we're already as lean as it can be?
So, go ahead. So I think there's 460,000 dollars in here for the meals program for the schools. And, you know, that all started again. COVID, every, every, every child was entitled to free meals from the schools. When my daughter was in school in Gloucester County, from the time she was in kindergarten until she was about a sophomore in high school, while I served on this board, I still qualified for my daughter to get a free lunch. Absolutely I did. You know what? I paid for it every time she got a school lunch. And I'm not saying that I'm better than anybody, but at the same time, I'm also in a position now that if I had children in school in this county, I could easily, much better afford their, their lunches and I wouldn't qualify anymore. But they would still be entitled to that free lunch because of the, the program that, that's in place. Honestly, I, I don't, I don't know if that four, that full 460 is, is really required. I understand they're gonna, they, they could have some issues, but at, at the end of the day, the federal government giveth and the federal government is now taking it away and it's on us again. And, you know, I don't, I don't like being put into a position that I now have to pay for everything that was given and promised and delivered until they take it away. And now it's, it's the Board of Supervisors' fault. And it's, it's, you know, the same thing with, with the, and I'm all about the veterans. I ain't worried about the Chromebooks. I'm all about our veterans and, and the folks that have, gave the ultimate sacrifice or, or now are in a, you know, 100% disabled, they get the discount. They only get the discount because the state said, if the locality government wants to give it, they can. So, you know, the state gets applauded, oh, we passed this. No, you didn't pass anything. All you did was pass the buck. And that's what we've been allowing to go on and unfortunately, you know, we got big rate payer, rate, rate increases for our rate payers. Actually, yeah, for our rate payers and on top of that, now they're gonna get hit in the pocketbook because we have to raise taxes to, to fund the budget. And I don't have an answer for line by line because, you know, we, we know that we are running lean. And, and we have been for, for a while. But at the end of the day, I, I just don't, I don't, what's in this budget is not sustainable. Because at some point Tyler's gonna come back to us again and go, we're gonna need that 750,000 dollars or we're gonna need another million. Because after we went and changed state law so we could get them in here, now, now they're, they're handcuffing us. They've changed their services. We had to change state law so that we could, we could get their services properly to us. And this is not sustainable. Raising taxes is not sustainable.
I, listen, I think everyone on this board is very conservative fiscally. I agree. I mean, regardless of, you know, who we are, we all have to balance our budget at home. And this has been a tough, tough year. We all know of the mandates that came down from the state, we really had no choice with regard to the veterans. And that's two pennies right there.
No, we, we could have not passed a local ordinance.
I guess we could have, but how would we have looked in the eyes of the veterans?
But the state, the State General Assembly does not care. The federal government does not care when they offer these things and then take them back. They pull the rug right up from underneath of you and then who's left there holding it? It's us. So I, I think that we, yeah.
But every, every community that we know of is facing the same issue as Ms. Steele pointed out. I don't, I don't, what do we do?
It's the same thing. You have a personal budget at home and I'm so used to going out four times a week to dinner. I love it. And now you want me to cut back? I can't stand that. I like my four nights a week for dinner. I don't wanna cut that back. That's what we've got here. We've got all these services. I don't wanna cut that back. I don't wanna go down to one night a week for dinner. I, I love my four nights a week, maybe even five nights a week for dinner. Or, and the weekends too. Well, do we cut out the weekend dinners? How many, how many weeknight dinners do we cut out? As Mr. Crisco said, we haven't done any of that here. Nothing.
But what would you propose? I'm sorry, but I...
Well, that's, that's with the whole premise of the 3%. I didn't ask for cutting heads. I asked for process improvements, making things more efficient. Maybe a Doge review by not, it's not gonna happen for budget season right now, but maybe some, some folks from outside can look at this. I've got an accountant, um, I've got another finance person who's interested in doing that. But we haven't, we haven't touched this. We haven't said, let's cut out the six nights that we've gone out to eat. Maybe let's cut it down to two or one. We haven't done that.
Well, is there anything for this budget year?
I think it's too late.
I mean, see, that's...
We're, we're here. We're, 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 we can't, we can't go back and say, I want...
Okay, well, I have a problem with it's too late for the simple fact that we first, that they've been working on this since the budget ended.
That's what I mean, it's too late. They've been working on this since the beginning.
We've known about this as a board since we had our one-on-ones, two-on-ones in January or February. So it's not like we're, we're only at the last minute because it's the last minute now.
Well, you guys might remember that her predecessor before, her predecessor's predecessor, the two predecessors before, came to us with a cut budget and her only answer was, we're gonna cut one of your board members' jobs, her daughter's, his daughter's job. And we all voted against not doing that because we wanted to save a job because one of the board members had a daughter that worked for the school system or the library system. I don't forget which one it was. And you guys know who it was. Cutting heads is the easy thing. That's the simple, quick, don't have to think about it. Hey, staff, cut your staff by 10%. Cut your staff by 10% because the taxpayers want you to. Is it gonna affect, affect some services? It probably will, but then you have to regroup and look at your services again and readjust. When we level fund the schools, I mean, they expect, they expect every year, they've come to us for the last 12 years I've been on this board, they've always asked for five or six million dollars. We, we level fund them. What do they do? They go back and look at their checkerboard and say, what can we rearrange? Because this is all we got. Why can't we do the same thing here? Sometimes we've level funded them. Last year we level funded the schools, if you recall. So, so they had to play with their checkerboard and say, oh, what do we do now? Why can't we do the same thing with our checkerboard?
Just think about, again, the comment Mr. Crisco said, we were three years ago not having to give tax relief to the veterans now we do. That's something that was an unanticipated loss of revenue. And we followed the, you know, the dictates. Well, we agreed to do that because of what the state said we could do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What, what is the windfall, manna from heaven? What, what is your projection based on this current budget?
Yeah, this one, I can work on some calculations while we're here. What it, we, um, personal property is a little more tricky. That, that comes in a little bit more sporadically and generally collection's not as good. Before we made these changes, it was just over a million, 1,550,000 dollars.
Okay. Just to the issue of, is it too late? I, I don't think it's too late. We're here tonight, we're here Wednesday. We could continue budget adoption to next week if we needed to. So if there are proposals that you have for cutting the budget in particular areas, then, then I think we should discuss those. I, I, when I look at this and when I look at what we've learned about the different departments in the county, I, I know that as, as Dr. Orth has said, that utilities is having difficulty hiring people and often short-staffed. I know the inspection office is having the same struggles and, you know, we get calls from frustrations about the, the limited staffing there. And so it, it doesn't strike me that we have bloated departments across the county. It's, it's the opposite. We've, we've got a very tight and lean situation. And so, yes, is, is cutting employees a legitimate budget proposal, looking at both the government or, or a business? Absolutely, but when, based on our experience and looking at the different departments, it strikes me that we have a very lean workforce and if we are cutting employees, we are, uh, hampering the services to our citizens. We've, you've, you've explored perhaps cutting salaries for certain segments and after research, it doesn't appear that's gonna provide much savings. So I, I think we're pretty lean, but, you know, I'd, I'd be open if there are specific recommendations regarding the budget. I, I was just doing some numbered... I, I was just doing some number crunching on it. Let's just say we don't do the Chromebooks and the, and the meals. We, we retain the, the 37 for the civic groups, but you, the, the amount for the Chromebooks and the meals is $976,006.10, and that's 1.71 pennies. So that would take us down under this budget to point, 2.6 pennies. If you also incorporate this increase in the personal property. So, I mean, that's, that's a major adjustment. And I think that's a big decision we have to make, is, do we include that or do we not? Because that makes a big difference in the tax rate.
But I'll look at it from the point of view, we still haven't looked at the county administrator's budget. We've just looked at two added items from the schools. Well, actually, we have looked at the county administrator's budget, and we've added $37,000 to it.
Ms. Callaway, did you send an update at local transfer that you do every year? I can't find it in my email. If you can, I, I'm, I'm looking for it now, because I wanted to see where we were with the funding, because that funding level's in it. And I can't find this year's that's in here.
You know, it may have been sent instead of being a spreadsheet straight to you. It's probably a board follow-up that was included.
I'm looking, okay.
So, but let me find, I'll find it for you.
So, Mr. Gibson, were you suggesting that maybe we rethink the support for the Chromebooks and the meals? Drop, that would be back to 2.9. But then again, that's the schools. That's doing nothing with us, so the county budget.
And Ms. Callaway can correct my calculations. I, I believe that would bring it down to 0.26. I'm, I'm not necessarily making that recommendation, but if we're looking to make cuts, I mean, that is, that is one example. Another option would be to not fund them through this budget, but see what this cash infusion, what that amount is, once the budget passes, and then we can make some determinations. Well, will some of that go to the meals, some to the Chromebooks, some to utilities? That would give us some more flexibility after the budget is passed, once we have a better idea of what that amount is. That, that would be one option for us to consider.
Were you saying it's a 0.26 increase total?
No, if you subtract the $976 from this budget, that amounts to 1.71 pennies.
And leaving the personal property tax with the increase?
Yes. And so you subtract the 1.71 to get down to 0.26. I'm just putting that out there for discussion.
If I may, I did quick, very quick calculations, because our original sug, our original, one of the things we put in the present, the last budget work session documentation was that the 1.055 million that was originally projected to be additional revenue would reduce the tax rate to 2.4 pennies, down from 4.3. And based on a very fast estimate of this personal property, I think we'd be looking at about an additional 1.3 in total. So an additional $250-ish thousand. So that would be a reduction of 2.3 pennies if you were to take that entire amount and apply it to fiscal year '26. So down to two pennies.
And I think what he's talking about was-
Two different things?
Two different things, because he's talking about if you eliminate, right? He's still talking about-
Eliminate the Chromebooks?
Eliminate, if you eliminate the Chromebooks and the schools, that's the million or the 900 and some.
But correct me if I'm wrong. We, when we give the schools their budget, they do what they want to do. They could manipulate the budget to fund those things and do without on something else. One school bus, two buses.
No, they don't even have to spend money on the Chromebooks.
That's, well, that's right. We give them a budget.
Capital is capital. So it comes out of the county capital, but the operating, the transfer to the schools, to their operating, they can change and do that however they like. If they choose to spend some of the bus money on fleet, that's still capital. So that was one of the things that was talked about, the fleet vehicles, instead of buying, like, maybe buy one less bus. That's still on their capital fund. So that wouldn't require any change or coming back to the board. It's still within their-
How many buses did they want by?
Oh, I don't remember how many she said. Eight, that's what I, okay. And the, I could be wrong, and this may require Mr. Wilmot's expertise, but I believe if you were to appropriate money for the food service, that also would not go into the big pot of school operating. That would have to be directly-
That's a reserve enterprise account.
That is correct.
School bus is what, $120,000?
About $165,000.
$165,000 apiece?
Yes, sir.
Cut two buses out and you pay for Chromebooks.
Cut two more buses and you pay for half the school lunch program, and we fund the rest. If you're not willing to cut anything else, I'm going down from seven meals a night to some other meals a night in our own budget. And I hate to do that to the school system. They need, they need those buses.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Steel, pardon me, I'm having back spasms. Ms. Steel, when we look, look at these columns versus what you, Mr., Mr. Hudson has said two, three times, and I agree with him. We have not looked at, investigated your proposed budget, although you took us through that. We've been through that a couple of times. I really feel like this is all fine, well and good. We can, we can talk about, we, if we want to cut things in, in Chromebooks, meals, whatever the case may be, I still feel like we need to at least look at that. The train has not left the station, Mr. Vazani. The train doesn't leave the station until this board votes on whatever we're gonna vote on. So I think we, we have to look at it, whether that be this evening or whether that be Wednesday evening. We need to look at what Ms. Steel presented and say, "We know what's over here. Let's look at what she presented and see if there's anything we want to change." Because I think that that has been mentioned two, three times, and I think that's something that, that needs to happen. In my opinion, I, I do. And I don't think it's too late. I don't think that the train has left the station. Sorry. I disagree with that. I don't think that, I don't think it's over until we vote and we establish what we established. So until that happens, I think we, we need to take, look at every option. Look at everything that has been presented.
It's all here, guys. We want it all right here. Which we've had, and it's our job.
I'm sorry. It's all right here, and it's our job. And, you know, I started, again, looking at this versus this. It's our job. If we want to, you know, carefully look at the figures and think that there are things that we can do, then we need to do it. Yeah. Who has the guts to start thinking, "What do we do to suggest that perhaps the county can reduce some things in its budget?"
So if, if you look, there's, there's a number that, that goes with the per student transfer. So while we have level funded the schools and, and I can't find, I cannot find. No, no, it's, she used, I used to get the spreadsheet redone, and it had the numbers. Yep. Can I see this? Yep. Nope, that's fine. Do we have here?
Set to $120, $24.
$2,002.
That's the one that's broken down by pupil. It has the enrollment. But I think that's in total dollars. I don't think that's in $20, $24.
It says current $20, $24.
Oh, it does? Oh, I apologize. Lots of, lots of worksheets here.
But since fiscal year '22, we have funded them at 29.7, 29.5, 30.5, and then last year at 29.9.
That's kind of like level funding.
However, however, if you look, in that same timeframe, we have lost what's going to be next year, when we're proposing at 29.9 again, we will have lost 300 students. So as you lose students and you continue to fund at that same level, then, then, then you are, without actually doing it, you are increasing the funding. Because if you were to break it down per pupil spending, then we are funding the schools at a higher rate per pupil in '26 than we were in '22.
Because of the reduction in students.
There's definitely the inflationary aspect, but I also don't want you to forget that it looks very positive that the school's gonna get 1.1 million more from the state that they wouldn't have gotten the year before because of the governor putting in more positions. So that's another, that was why I felt comfortable with doing level funding. I know things don't cost what they cost last year. Even with less students, you still have so many things that are not variable, that are fixed expenses. But I knew they were gonna get 1.1, and that's what I was banking on.
But when we lose money per student, they're also losing money per student.
Yeah, and they have, they have-
Salaries are gonna increase. They also have insurance that's gonna increase.
They still have to maintain, they still have to maintain, yeah. They have schools that maintain electricity.
Exactly. That stuff increase, fuel.
No, but we're, we're talking about our side of the ledger.
Right.
Our side, not that what the state provides. Our side of the ledger, the ADM, the ADM is a state function. The, our side of the ledger comes, I'm sorry, our side of the ledger comes from our funds. And so as you lose students, the per, they're, they're, it's costing them less per student now, but we're still funding them more, even though it's costing less on our side of the ledger, is what Mr. Crisco is saying. Don't, don't, don't think about ADM, because that's a state function.
But they have set costs. Their cost is X. And if they're getting less from the state, that's where they're saying that we need to match it to match what they're losing from state and federal governments. And if you look at the 300 students divided by all the grades and all the elementary schools, you're not able to do an equal cut on teachers. Because of different, I mean, just actual personnel cuts.
And he does have 18 teaching positions to be cut in this proposed budget.
And I don't dispute the math of the reduced students, but I think it goes back to the real estate value. If we, we don't have top-quality schools, then the overall value of our real estate is gonna decline. And, and so I, I think the inflationary costs and the need to, to maintain the excellence in our schools warrants this budget.
We're, all, all I am asking, all I'm, all I'm looking at is, all right, so we go all the way back to fiscal year 2014 on this chart. School operating transfer was $29.6 million for 5,600 students. We are proposing a $29,909,000 budget this year for 4,700 students.
Remember, that is adjusted $20, $24.
Well, then, I, I, I need, I need the one that, that I thought I'd asked for, that was the, just building on the ones that we've been doing since I first got elected back in 2013. I, I thought I'd ask for that, but at the, at the end of the day, I can't find it. At the, at the end of the day, you know, our transfer, I mean, basically is, is flat from 2014 with almost 1,000 less students attending the school.
That's the conundrum.
So inflationary is great, but in the last four years alone, we've lost 7%. I think that's what I figured, and I'm probably only wrong, but yeah, probably close to 7% of our student population. And we're still funding them at the same level. I'm not saying we go and, and try to get a penny. I'm not saying any of that. But I'm saying that's the stuff that we have to look at, because while there is an inflationary aspect to this, you know, we are, we are also responsible for every dollar and cent that we spend. And I think that's something that we need to look at as we figure out what we're gonna do between now, tonight, and next month. Now, to Wednesday night and next month.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harley, I'm, I, I'm gonna ask you to do something for me. You don't have to get up. I'm just gonna ask you to do something for me. Just piece information I'd like to have. We know what Chromebook costs, and we've talked that into paralysis. But what I want to know is, what does a textbook cost? And, and because I don't know, you know, we've been, we've been using, we've been using Chromebooks now for, for the five years I've been in the class, four, five years I've been in the classroom. So in the last four, five years, I don't, I don't have textbooks. Everything that I use is on the Chromebook. So I would like to know what a textbook costs. Just in comparison to the Chromebook, what does a textbook cost? Because if we get rid of the Chromebooks, we're gonna, if, if they get rid of the Chromebooks, they're gonna have to pay, they're gonna have to buy textbooks. And, and guess what they're gonna do? They're gonna, they're gonna ask us for some help on that. Because I would, I would venture to say, a set of textbooks for a classroom with multiple periods is probably gonna run a right smart amount of money. So if you could get that information for me, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Vincoci, are you saying that the Chromebooks, in, in some cases, have replaced textbooks? But they're buying the same number of textbooks?
They have completely replaced textbooks, and most classes don't have them unless they are ones that they had previous to the purchase of the Chromebooks.
Are they buying new textbooks despite the fact that they're using Chromebooks?
Negative. We are not.
There are some new textbooks proposed in this budget, and there also is a small apportionment that they receive from the state for textbooks. But I think most, and they, they could say much more than we'll ever know about all this, but this-
Those are specialized textbooks.
It is much more electronic.
The average classroom, Mr. Vazani. I can, I can speak on this. This is where I live. You, you live at CNU. I live at Gloucester High School. The average classroom, there are specialized classes that require textbooks. That's not, that's not, that's what it, the way it is. But the average classroom and the average subject that is taught in Gloucester High School, math, English, so on and so forth, all of that is electronic. Nursing probably has a textbook. EMT has a textbook. There are specialized classes that have textbooks. But at, in general, we do not have textbooks in our classrooms.
Math and science don't have textbooks?
They use Canvas. We use Canvas. We, we use a Ca, we use Canvas programs. Everything that we need, we download to Canvas. Everything the teachers teach off of, they download to Canvas, whether it comes from McGraw-Hill, whether it comes from the, the Canvas Commons. Wherever it comes from, everything is electronic. Why? Because the next time we have a pandemic, all right, this is, this is, this is what they say. And, and I believe it. The next time they have a pandemic, they send little Kevin Smith home with his Chromebook, and I could teach Kevin from my house to his house. All right, so what I'm telling you is, on that Chromebook, whether you get them or not, I'm just explaining to you, everything a child needs, everything a child needs, everything a child will need- everything a child needs, everything a child will need to pass your class is on that Chromebook, because you as the instructor, upload the material, teach the material, and they do the work.
That's still concerning to me, though. You're saying, you're saying the Chromebooks are replacing textbooks, but we're still buying textbooks.
For specialized classes.
So, so for instance, your classes, you don't, you don't teach from a textbook?
I don't.
You use a Chromebook.
But if I was the EMT instructor, I'd be teaching from a book about that high. Right? If I was a nursing, if I was a nursing instructor, I'm teaching from a book like that.
So mathematics is taught from a, from a Chromebook?
Yes. All subjects of math.
That's concerning to me.
Well, you want to know what, what was, what was concerning to me was way back in the day, I say way back in the day. In twenty seventeen, my daughter was a senior at Gloucester High School. She came, no, she came home with a textbook. And she goes, Dad, I'm looking at my textbook. This kid signed his textbook in nineteen ninety-one. Do you know him? I said, absolutely. That was our sophomore year in school. This was so-and-so was our teacher. And I don't remember now, but at the time I did. And that textbook, you know, at that point in time was probably close to thirty years old. And so, you know, there, there's gotta be, we gotta do something with those Chromebooks. However, again, it falls on us because they got the money, and here we are. It's four years later and how do we replace it? So the only thing that, that concerns me, and this is a question that I'll, I'll send to the, to the schools, is their request is for an amount of money that doesn't match up to a third of the, of the, of the Chromebook. It doesn't match. So, you know, whatever the number it was is supposed to be five seventy, and I moved on from it in my emails looking for something else, but let me see, I can, I got it too, Chris. I can pull it up. So on a four-year cycle, it would be five seventy-five, seven fifty, and that's twelve hundred and twenty-five of them, but they're only requesting five twenty-six, two forty. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. But I do know that I'm not going to support what I'm looking at on this screen because the ratepayers are getting hit twice. And I don't think it's, I, I don't think we're in the spot to do all of this the way that we're looking at it right now.
A question on the Chromebooks again. So every student gets it regardless of whether they're in need of it or not in terms of they could pay for it? It goes to every student free?
Elementary's banks, right?
Yeah, the, the one-on-one initiative is secondary.
Elementary does, elementary does not get them. They have like a bank of them to use.
They got per classroom, right?
Yeah, I think so.
But every, everybody to high school.
No.
But everyone to the high school, so what, so a person that's, as parents that are well off, they get a free Chromebook too.
So if you're a ninth grader coming into high school, right, say you come in in August, you're coming into high school, one of the stops that you'll make is at the Chromebook table with your parent, right? There'll be some, you pick up your Chromebook. JJ, little JJ, and his parents are now responsible for that Chromebook, right? So you could carry the same Chromebook, and I have kids in my class right now who are seniors who got their Chromebook when they were freshmen, they still have the same one. And when they graduate here in about another month, when their last day comes, they will go to Mr. Roan, who is our technology guy in the high school, and they will turn in said Chromebook and Chromebook charger and move on with life. But yes, when you, when you come to the high school, you are issued a Chromebook. And you, uh, most kids carry them in their, in their backpack. So, for example, Mr. Smith will send us an email, and he'll say, oh, I got little JJ in ISS. He said, can you send to work? And so I will email Mr. Smith and say, little JJ has this assignment, this assignment, this assignment, and this assignment that they need to do in Canvas. Where Mr. Smith could say, you got Canvas work to do in personal finance, and he's got a list of what needs to be done. Okay, so that's, uh, so yes, every high school kid has one. Even the high school kid that is in the, in the specialized class, such as EMT. The reason I know is because I saw the book. EMT student has an EMT book that they use in that class that we have at the high school. They also have a Chromebook that encompasses the rest of their classes. So yes, each student has a Chromebook in the high school.
So, so, okay, so I'm a little confused. So if, if a class teaches strictly from a textbook, if the class requires a textbook?
The textbook is online. There is no book.
There is no, there's no physical book that can read and flip the pages?
It is online. There is no book.
Well, we're making our students buy hardback cover books.
But the thing is.
Yeah, and then when we go to resell it, we can't get our money back. Yeah.
But the five, the five hundred thousand that we're dealing with still is, you know, in the overall budget still small. I mean, it is a penny. But we are dealing with, again, you know, what Mr. Crisco said, looking at it, he's, doesn't want to support that, so what do we do? So, Mr. Crisco, any suggestions on how we could get that lower?
To get what lower?
The four point three. Because you said you couldn't support this. What do we do? Do you have any suggestions that we can discuss?
I, I just discussed that, you know, I, I'm not sure that we can continue to level fund the schools. I mean, at some point, they've got to give some back. I mean, we've been funding them at this level, we've been funding them at twenty, twenty, I'll put it to you this way. We've increased their, their budget has increased. And I, I don't have it in front of me because I can't find that chart. Twenty percent in student population's probably gone down thirteen to fifteen percent since you and I got on this board. So in the grand scheme of things, that's the one budget line item that I, I think we really have to, to, to look at because of the amount of declining population. And, you know, we had the discussion with them, and, you know, that's been a concern, but leaving that alone is an increase by default.
How, how is it increased by default?
If you're serving less people and you give them this, you asked a question, can I answer it?
But you're still forgetting their salaries are going up, insurance is going up. Things are not staying the same. When I was on the school board, a school bus cost you a hundred thousand dollars. The school bus now is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Correct.
I mean, things increase. They're not going to stay the same. They're not going to.
Alright, but from this.
I don't expect them to stay the same.
You, you asked a question. You won't let me answer. So from, from last year to this year, seven percent decrease in student population. So if we, if, let me finish. If we take the inflationary of the four to whatever percent, then we could possibly cut their budget by three percent because that's what we have, that, that figures what inflationary pressure has put on our budgets, about four percent annually. So that three percent extra, that three percent more that they're still getting with that decrease in population, that's the three percent increase.
What's the difference in students from last year to this year?
About a hundred.
A hundred.
Average about a hundred seventy-five, a hundred decrease.
So I think what Dr. Orth is asking is that, is that your specific proposal to cut three percent from the school budget? Is that what you're proposing?
Well, I don't have my abacus and all the correct tools here because I'm, I'm still missing the one, and I know, I know she sent it. I can't find it in emails. I, I have it.
I think what happened is it went out to the full board and as a part of a follow-up, and it's the chart. It's not the Excel spreadsheet that you're used to looking at the tabs.
Didn't you give it out of the media?
I did, and so it's paper, and it's, it's not the same. So that is my mistake, and I'll make sure that you get that. And I can pull up the transfer history on my laptop if that would be helpful and provide those numbers.
Here's what I suggest. We've been numbered out. We have a meeting on Wednesday. Let's close this meeting tonight and come back and continue the discussion of where we can go with the budget for both the county and the school. And in the meantime, everyone look at these. This is it. You got, we all have a book. We've got these things. We have lots of handouts. It's our job.
And, and I guess.
And come up with some suggestions. So how do we, we, we want to drop the tax rate because we're raising the personal property three-ten and tax rate, and then we've got the people whose water rates are going to go up, and who knows what HRSD is going to do with their rates.
Oh, it's going to go up. It's going, if you look, it's going up every year.
That's right.
I mean, but my, my suggestion would be that five, and I don't remember what the number is now because I've looked at so many sheets, but the Chromebook number, whatever it is, it's five seventy-two. Do you remember what it is?
Five hundred and seven.
I, I don't.
Five twenty-six, two forty.
Five twenty-six, two forty. I think a few years ago, we, we, we challenged the schools with, hey, this is the amount of money that you're getting. And if you want that five twenty-six, you got to go find it. Because again, I, 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 I think we can find it somewhere between the, between the budgets, but at the end of the day, we we, as a board of supervisors, cannot be on the hook for every mandate that expires. We just cannot.
Yeah, the Chromebooks.
We're not the only ones. It's everywhere.
So as I said, let's get back on, uh, Mr. Hudson's not going to like that idea.
No, I'm not, because we're getting at the point where we're pussyfooting around and not making any decisions. Let's make a decision. Let's figure out what we're going to do and go with it, and don't cut because it's eight-thirty at night and we need to watch a baseball game or something else. Let's work. Okay, the next thing is, it's kind of aggravating that we harp and look at every single item with the school board and critical of every one that they do. When they're an elected body, we can tell them what we want to do, but as we've mentioned before, we've got other depart, we've got people that we contribute money to, volunteer organizations. We don't question a dime of what they get. So what they do with their money, and I understand school's a whole lot larger item. But we're not questioning anything with any of the, um, organizations that we give money to.
Five hundred twenty-four, four seventy-one.
You're missing a couple others.
Yes, there, they, there are some nonprofits that are spread out across other functions.
Such as?
Fire and rescue.
How much is that?
Just under six million, I believe.
Six million fire and rescue.
Five point.
Fire station.
So.
So what are you suggesting? I mean, I, I don't mind staying here, but I mean, we're just going round and round and round.
That's, but that's what we're going to do Wednesday night. That's what we're going to do. So I mean, we either need to say that we're going to cut it back, if we're going to leave here tonight anytime soon, and we want to sit there and say, if you'd go back up to the top, Ms. Callaway, I'd appreciate it. If we're going to say we're going to knock it out, and this is where it's going to be, if you're going to knock the Chromebooks out, if you're going to knock the lunches out, if you're going to knock the thirty-seven thousand out, if you're going to knock, uh, first one I see is the treasurer's office, if we're going to tell, um, Ms. Thomas that she's getting a cut, cut purchasing, cut whatever else. We need to figure out if we're going to make other cuts in the budget, that's what we're going to cut and figure it out. We still haven't talked to the big elephant in the room, which is utilities. I mean, we're looking right now at using this fund balance and knocking it back so we're not having a four-point-three cent increase, or only having a four-point-three instead of a little bit higher, where that three, um, three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars could potentially go to utilities that's needed. You, you mentioned earlier about matching what the taxpayers or the users are paying for utilities. We could use that three-twenty right there, three-twenty-one to also, to equal what the, um, ratepayers are going to be paying. And so we're looking at, yes, they're going to be double taxed, but they're going to be double taxed either way because of the rate increases that y'all just voted on.
So I guess the first thing we should do, because we haven't looked at what Mr. Gibson proposed a change of taking out the one point or whatever, the nine hundred and some thousand dollars. Can we look and see what that does to the budget? I think it's.
It's probably, just take it out, okay. Yes, sorry. I was probably looking for a document.
No, you're fine. I just, let's, let's take that out so we can see where we end up.
Alright, so we're going to take back out the personal property number and the use of fund balance as well?
He was giving personal property in and adjusting the, the real estate tax rate is what he was suggesting.
Right. Because I think if we do that.
Or two point six percent, two point six pennies.
Yeah, two point six.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out where my next number is going to come from.
Manor from Avery.
No, no, I'm not worried about that at the moment.
You'd like the fund balance pulled out, the use of fund balance?
Because we're not using it for the Chromebooks or anything else. It's not, doesn't need to be there, right?
And then that'll impact that.
I would think so, yeah.
That'll take the taxes back up.
Back up.
The real estate tax back up.
Alright, so let's, let's, let's take it out then. And see what it does to the real estate tax.
Three point one pennies.
Okay, now to get to the four point three, which we don't necess, I want to see, because the personal property taxes should be adjusted as well, but I'm trying to figure out what the rate's going to be because this is just confusing me at the moment, but what is our, what is our positive? What, what are, we got to be positive, or is that just?
No, we just.
So we are just even again?
Balanced, correct, to get the, we balanced to bring the real estate rate down. We could pretty much take these two out and we'd still be back at the four point three. So we could start over and plug back and forth. Or I could put, you know, three hundred fifty thousand here, and that, you can see how that changes here. But then we're short.
Personal property tax went down like this now.
Yeah, she was showing what it could do.
Right, so we're basically going to be thirty-seven thousand dollars.
That's only funding the nonprofits right now.
Correct. So we're at three point one on personal property, and then point six one four for the real estate.
Yes. These are the new rates.
So.
Oh, this is not right.
My suggestion would be to raise, would go back.
I'm trying to, well, I just noticed why you're probably confused. This is not right. It's the same number. This is showing the total impact, and it was supposed to show only the increase. Think, but the increase is this number, which is why it's confusing. Because we didn't propose one. I apologize.
No, that's, that's, that's fine. I, I mean.
So we took out the, we took out the Chromebooks, we took out the
Lunches.
Lunches.
Meals.
The meals, and we're down to three point one cents.
Well, you're down to three point, three dollars and ten cents per hundred for personal property. And then sixty-one point four cents per hundred on, on the real estate.
A point of clarification, Mr. Hartley, or probably not Mr. Hartley, that is not the full amount of the school meals. That was just an increase that was proposed that y'all needed, correct? So they're still getting. So they're still getting. That's not in here.
There is, there are charts for the schools. I don't have my paper copy, but I have it pulled up here. They begin on page 74.
The concern that I raised with a couple of you all talking about, if not all of you, is that the schools have, they've had to go through their fund balance in their cafeteria account this year, so unless they change their policy, they would go into the hole because they don't have a fund balance, they won't have a fund balance left.
So it's bad to have a decreased fund balance? Oh, just checking.
Yes. Especially the way that theirs is an enterprise account.
While we in silence, Mr. Baines, have you cut the air down in here some, please? Yeah. It, it's cold. It's cold.
So Ms. Calloway, a question, you know. Looking at this document that we had on Monday.
Yes.
And looking at some of the proposed 3% cuts, some of them just, they don't come, they don't cut salary, they cut some of the other stuff. If we wanted to look at some blood coming from the county, would some of those potential cuts be an issue? They don't cut salaries, they don't cut, you know, the insurance. They're just cutting some of the basic day-to-day operations.
Yeah, and I think that.
Could we?
Ms. Steele and I had discussed, some of them are significant because 3% to some departments means different things to different departments.
Right.
Um, I believe that there are, we can go back and revisit those and maybe perhaps, I, I'll let Ms. Steele answer because some, they were very extreme in operating.
Right.
We were cutting down office supplies to just minimal, minimal amounts where people may have to bring their own supplies into work, and we.
Sure, like teachers.
Had to cut out training. We just don't have that many line items.
I know.
I mean.
Well, I know. I, I mean, I said, I look, I was.
Staffing is what.
I was doing this, back and forth.
So. If you include the training in constitutional offices, it's $298,000. Is only county departments. It does not include constitutional offices.
Take a five minute, 10 minute recess.
Where did we leave off with our discussion last?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Callaway, can you pull back up what we're currently using with where we've ended our discussions before the break? With the unassigned fund balance?
Oh, yes, sir.
How much we've used?
So we have taken this out, so we are back at fifteen point six in the original proposed.
And how much is the? How much was the? The lunches for the schools?
Four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Can we put that number in, in there just to see it for a second? I'm gonna say something here, so it's at fifteen point three. So this would reduce, in my, in my thinking, would reduce the go get for the schools to them to figure out the fund the Chromebooks. Doing it this way gives the schools one year to means test and figure out what's going on with those lunches because as these students, some of these students no longer require the free lunches. It buys them a year to get the whole system figured out, so they know what they need, for sure. Because while we're still dealing with the ramifications of COVID, it reduces it to, hey, we're gonna level fund you, but if you want Chromebooks, you gotta get them yourself. That's, that's where, instead of, you know, trying to make them find a whole nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, if they want Chromebooks, they can go figure out how to get them.
That still keeps us taxed for that, right?
It doesn't change the other, doesn't change the other sheet.
But let's see where it goes back to.
And is the board comfortable with using fund balance for that as non-capital?
The only reason I would be because I'm telling them, this is it. This is your last year, you're not getting into following year, and that's the only reason I'd be okay with it.
One time use. Okay, I would agree with that. So a penny would be five, six, eight. You said you guys would be willing to look at.
If we're gonna extract some blood here and there to show that we're willing to do stuff for the county. By the way, in the administrative budget, there was a hundred fifty-six thousand for planning. What is a hundred fifty-six thousand used for, for the planning?
Under administration, come at the planning. The, um, Planning District Commission.
That's under the board budget, so under the Board of Supervisors budget.
Yeah, it was, it was.
There's a Planning District Commission line. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, it was a hundred fifty-six thousand.
It's a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
So those are the contributions to the Middle Peninsula and Hampton Roads, PDC, the memberships, the MPAA.
Okay, okay.
We're still a mosquito on a elephant's rear. But they do all the decisions, Gloucester can't.
Yeah, okay, but we contribute. It's based on numbers?
It's, it's, yes, and while, yes, we are a non, a non-player at the HR PDC. It is very helpful for us transportation-wise to remain as a partner there. Which is why we haven't left in the past, because we've had that discussion. And we are the biggest fish at the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission.
We are also on that five-year water study that has to be done, and they are contractual paging on that.
Right, and the other thing is, and I don't know what it is with the HR PDC, but the MP PDC, for every dollar we invest, we can, we can, I can show you about a two hundred dollar return on that dollar. To goods and services and dredging and whatever other project that they've worked on, there, it's about a two hundred dollars for every dollar that we spend.
Ms. Callaway, a question on, again, when you identified.
The personnel associated with each department. These are personnel that are currently there, or are they departments that are short because they can't hire everyone?
I believe in all of these circumstances, they were, uh, they're all personnel that are required. Personnel to maintain the operations of the department. Example would be an animal control officer, we just had a retirement. So that one would end up impacting personnel, and that would mean have major implications, but that position is currently being advertised, from what I understand.
So all the positions are in there, but we also include vacancy savings, but we do that collectively. And we increase the amount trying to push the budget further and keep from having a even higher tax rate. We, we increased vacancy savings another couple hundred thousand.
With each of these departments, have the number of employees stayed the same, increased or decreased over time? I mean, we look at, is that something that would be interesting?
There are a minor couple that have gone down, but most of them have stayed the same and some have gone up. But there's only a couple examples where generally a part-time position was eliminated. And that's, most of the times because they're so hard to fill, and we're facing that right now, and we've had that in the past, too.
How does everyone feel about Mr. Crisco's proposal?
I don't have any problem with it. So now we're at three point one and three ten for personal property, still.
Mr. Nikosha.
Chair. I'd like to, to piggyback on, uh, Mr. Crisco for a second. Although I understand where he's coming from. Ms. Callaway, if you would oblige me, can you, um, add the Chromebook money in with the, with the school lunch money?
Under fund balance?
That you just did for Mr. Crisco. At where does that land?
The Chromebooks and which else? The food service?
Along with his, along with his putting the lunches, what he, what he did earlier.
But it's under fund balance.
Yeah, under fund balance.
You want to go back to that sheet?
You gotta go back.
Oh, I'm following what you're saying, I apologize. All right, let's see, so, um, do the full nine seventy-six, I see what you're saying, okay. Nine seventy-six, two forty.
I just wanna see what it looks like. All right, right, but I just wanted to see it. And so, and, and because I kinda had the same, I was kinda on the same line. That's not something I wanna do, but I was kinda on the same line with Mr. Crisco about the lunches. He wants the means test a year, right? So what I, my thought process is, is that we, we say, okay, we'll, we'll give one-third. But, but in your next budget deliberation as a board, you have to figure out how you're gonna pay for the other three-thirds. Um, you know, so that we're not, uh, that's just a thought, right? For the, for, just my thought. We, we'll, we'll, we'll go in the first year, but the next three years and any years after that will be something that they have to put in their budget. Just, just an idea, I just wanted to see it in visual terms.
So Mr. Nikosha, you wanna back that out now, now that we see the numbers?
Yeah, I just wanted to look at, that's all.
But it's too hard, but it has to get the schools to find a means tester, their, their school lunch program for a year?
Well, we, we, we still have in our budget the one point one for. No, the one point one for, um, or did we take that out for the, the bus ask? That's still contemplated, correct? So, I mean, they, they have the money there to go, okay, we're only gonna get four buses, and then we can get this. I mean, to me, that money exists because while they're asking for, and I think it's eight.
Eight buses.
Eight buses, that money is already existing there for them to go and say, hey, we get six buses, we get Chromebooks, or we can get five buses, handle our fleet vehicles, and then get the Chrome. We, we haven't taken everything out, but there's, where there's a will, there's a way. And I, I think that they still have a path to fund what they need, they might not get all eight buses.
The Director of Buses, I forget what her name was. Ms. Decker did an, you know, did an excellent presentation on how she looked at her processes, didn't lose any school bus drivers, but looked at her processes and cut back, what, thirty-six percent down the, so. She may, she may be able to find with just five school buses instead of eight.
Mr. Hartley, can I ask you a question? I've heard, come, I really want this one, because I've heard a rumor. And it, this does affect the budget. I've heard a rumor, is it true that there's a, that an email goes out pretty regularly that buses are late, having to double up because there's a severe shortage of drivers, school bus drivers?
So I would say partly, yes, communication's always going out, we, we are.
That's not the question, that there's a severe shortage of bus drivers.
I don't know if it says severe, but we do have a shortage of bus drivers.
So goes back to what you were just saying. We have had cuts, but we do have a shortage of bus drivers.
Correct. And we're recruiting all the time.
I know, but would you check into that severe, because I've heard severe.
I will certainly check into severe.
She was stressed when she did her presentation to us.
I, I was, I was surprised by that, too, because she said she had enough drivers, and I thought, when have you ever had enough drivers? That was the only thing.
But I remember that.
No, she wasn't stressed, because she's at ease, public speaking, but, um.
No, but she said she was there, but she didn't mention the fact that she had a shortage of bus drivers that night.
Well, I, you know, sometimes we use language like we have routes covered, we do have routes covered. It doesn't mean that we don't need more drivers, again, we're constantly recruiting, we have seven drivers that train in currently. I mean, it's just the on, ongoing process, and then you start dealing with competition from other localities, because everybody's playing the game of bumping compensation up for drivers. Um, so whatever incentives they could put out there, sometimes we lose drivers other localities. Sometimes we lose drivers for other reasons, retirements, relocations, things like that, so.
My brother, who's retired from his career, has, is driving school buses through York County, but he was playing auctions between Gloucester and York County. He said, what can you do for me, Gloucester, what can you do for me, York County? So he finally settled with York County, since they paid him more.
Right.
So, but, um, it, yeah, it's, it's, it's tough competition.
It certainly is.
For the certain, you know, resources that you have for school bus drivers.
I think that, I think we see that with a lot of other positions, too.
Okay, while we're, while you're still up there, Mr. Hartley. And this might not be where you are, but the proposed, um, one-year chance to do means testing or whatever else, is that gonna be something y'all can do?
So since the opportunity presented itself, um, in the, this, the CEP program is, I mean, it's expensive. Free's not free, we, we've communicated that before. We, we're not like some other localities that get reimbursed at a hundred percent rate. So our full reimbursement rate starts at about sixty-five percent, and then it drops to ten percent for remaining thirty-five percent. So the, the numbers we put out there are really kinda like an average from last year that we had five CEP schools, and this year when we have all eight CEP schools. So that costs us about an additional three hundred thousand dollars. The year before was also three hundred thousand dollars. So really, that number's closer to six hundred for all schools, it's a cost to the division. But we're always looking for efficiencies in all our services, so we're looking at different meal offerings, um, different ways to, to prep food, um, looking at some scratch cooking options and things like that. So we're, we're tracking numbers constantly, but that, that is a, a big expense, is the CEP program.
C E P?
C, Community Eligibility Provision.
And so you're saying all seven schools right now?
All, all eight schools.
That's right, I keep forgetting the high school. All eight will be eligible.
All eight this current year.
And what about next year?
They'll still be eligible if we choose to participate.
And if you don't choose, you won't get any reimbursement?
So if we don't, and we go back to a paid meal model, then what we'll do is the students that were eligible for free and reduced lunches are still eligible and can still apply and receive free and reduced lunch based on income basis. Um, so they would still receive those meals, the other ones would be paid.
So have you, have y'all run the models on that to see where they are? Where, what the difference would be for the, um, schools?
Uh, and I don't have the numbers with me, but.
No, but have you run them for just the ones that are qualified?
Not yet, we have not run them yet.
Still about forty percent.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, forty-two percent would qualify for that program, so they would have to fund.
And so you would only be making roughly forty-two plus the percentage of students that buy it?
Correct.
Okay, but, and so your cost would decrease because you wouldn't have as much food to buy and everything else?
Correct, yes, I mean, it, it would be, again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it'd be a more profitable model to be on a paid.
And what's the average school lunch and high school cost for students, do you have a charge?
Uh, I'd have to get that number, to be honest with you. No, it's not twenty-five cents anymore, it's, uh.
You didn't even have school buses back then, did you? You had wagons, but.
They had horses. Horse-drawn carriage.
No, it's not that, it's, it.
Can, Mr. Chair, I think that, you know, the school board would be the final decision-makers on what program they put into place. So if the board adopted this challenge to them, it, um, and they decided to go with the paid program, I think that would be because they couldn't make the challenge. I mean, the school board would be deciding, but either way, personally, I could see the funds going there because even if they start charging, they don't have a fund balance starting next year. I mean, I know that there are a number of you who would like to see it stay as it is. If they, if it stays as it is, they're gonna take the full amount that you're talking about and probably have to contribute maybe as much as another hundred and fifty thousand to be able to make that happen. But that's, and so I'm, my ad, I'm just advocating that I think they could use that, those funds, whichever system they go under.
I agree. My problem with this, and I'm not directing at y'all, but you might feel that way. I think that the amount that we talked about this last Monday night of what the amount would be, that that number is not readily available, and what it would cost the schools is beyond me. That we don't have an idea of what that forty-two percent would be, what it would actually cost.
And I think, too, um, it's fair to ask those questions, and I know our county attorney will tell you, too, though, that you don't get the say-so in it, but if I was advocating, again, for the schools, the more transparent they are, the more likely than you all are to see, boy, you need that. So, the more information, it helps you all make your decisions, so I can see that, too.
And if I may, it doesn't directly answer your question, Mr. Hudson, but, you know, once the pandemic, we haven't had a typical model in our food service department since the pandemic, because the pandemic set in, everybody was reimbursed a full amount. At some point in time, we had a directed compensation adjustment for certain groups of employees. Um, so that, that's another difference that we had. And then once we came out of full reimbursement, we immediately went into five of our schools being CEP for two years, and then we got to this year and all eight are CEPs. So, you know, to, to go back to a model where it was a paid lunch model, that was the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year that got cut short because of the pandemic. Um, but we can certainly work on getting closer to, to a number.
For this budget, I don't think it matters, but it, I.
No, and that's, that's why I said, we set it up as one time now, and they, but let me finish.
I will.
They get a year, and then, then we can maybe have a better understanding of what that forty-two percent is, what that actual ask is going to be, and then we can figure it out from there. Because, again, this is something that, that, that was born itself out of COVID or the pandemic, whatever you wanna call it. Again, it's something that was started, and again, kinda stopping because we're not getting the full reimbursements. So we need to figure out a path out of this, and this gives them an additional year to figure out that path, and then we can adjust going forward to whatever that new model would look like. Twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty-six, what it is and what we're gonna end up with.
I, I agree, but the, the biggest issue I have with that is, is just like the school buses of yesteryear, when we put money out of personal, um, property taxes. Potentially, there's gonna be three new board members on this board next year. And so whatever decision we make that, well, I said potentially three, but with what, any decision we make this year, it's all gonna change next year. So, I mean, to sit there, and that's the issue I have, is that we're making a decision on what could happen, and what, but every budget, there's no way to set it in stone of what's gonna happen. That's the problem.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even trying to set it in stone, I'm, I'm trying to give them a runway to fig, give them a year to figure it out, and then, then we, we, we handle it. Because on top of everything else we're doing tonight, sometime in November, Mr. Thomas is gonna be here and go, hey, here's everybody's new assessment, and we're gonna be looking at, what are we gonna do with that for the following budget year? So there's a lot of things that are, there's always a lot of moving parts, but I think this gives us an opportunity to meet some of their needs and, and, and they also, um, get an opportunity to provide what they need to provide if that is what it's determined to be.
So we're at three point one and three dollars and ten cents for personal property tax. Three, what, one cent? Fund balance at fifteen.
At fifteen point two, is it?
Four, six.
That's reasonable if you guys wanna do that.
Mr. Hartley. Mr. Hartley.
You're adding four fifty, so fifteen point three for fund balance.
The, the summer food program, is that done also through the same, the same money?
It's, it's in tandem, but we, we can still do the summer food program.
Because they, I mean, we just got an email.
Right.
Just got one.
Right, so we just got the ball rolling.
Families still wanna, you know, get the meals through the summer, and they do provide them, I don't know how many they provided last summer.
I, I can get the number, but it was up there, it was quite a few.
It was quite a few, that's why, that's why I'm saying it's bad, you guys, it's worse than we think. I mean, in the summer, they, they driving their kids up to, you know, to pick up some food.
Right, but that's.
Lunch, I know, and I know, I know what you do.
We're not, we're not, we're not cutting it, and then the beautiful thing, we're at fifteen point three on the fund balance, so then I, my recommendation would be to take whatever, what do y'all call it, the manna from heaven? That's the, the term so far.
The profit, as somebody else would call it.
Then it would go back to that fund balance, because that would probably be enough to bring it back to close to sixteen percent, or more. Um, so.
No, I knew you were.
We can, we can then figure out what we are able to do with that to help offset anything else, or if all of a sudden, Mr. Dern and, and Mr. Hartley come back and go, hey, guys, the, the four fifty was great this one time, but we're gonna need another hundred and fifty to make it work, because whatever happens.
Yeah, we did our stuff.
Um, and it may be a matter of the schools go in and they, they make the decision, we're gonna do five buses, we're gonna get our fleet cars done, and we're gonna do the, um, some Chromebooks, and then they may come back to us and go, hey, all of a sudden, there's a deal, can we get more Chrome? We give them the money to get more Chromebooks, because everybody at some point has a sale. We might, we might catch something, you know, lightning in a bottle, and something good happens for a change, as opposed to health insurance is up twelve percent, it's up twenty percent for you guys. At some point, something has to change, but I think this is a, a decent path forward.
Where, where the Chromebooks manufactured, do we know?
Probably in China.
Do we know if they're, did they put a tariff on electronics?
Everything imported, the company's tariffed.
Yeah, but, so, so it's not necessarily gonna go up, so if it's a three hundred and thirty-dollar item, it's not necessarily gonna go up to six, it, it, it's, it's a different terminology, so it would be a much smaller tariff than a hundred and twenty-five percent.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
But we're still not looking at utilities.
And my suggestion there is, once we know what the manna from heaven becomes, then we can look at doing something as a.
Next year?
Or even, even this year, sometime, when would we know for sure? September-ish?
September.
October first?
Will be the estimate.
Then we can go, boom, we're going to. We're, we're going to contribute to the utilities.
Okay, well, what, let's go back, I know we're trying to cut the.
Mr. Hartley? Mr. Hartley?
You're adding four fifty, so fifteen point three for fund balance.
The, the summer food program, is that done also through the same? The same money?
It's, it's in tandem, but we, we can still do the summer food program.
Because they, I mean, we just got an email.
Right.
It's got when...
Right, so we just got the ball rolling.
Families still wanna, you know, get the meals through the summer, and they do provide them. I don't know how many they provided last summer.
I, I can get the number, but it was up there. It was quite a few.
It was quite a few. That's why, that's why I'm saying it's, it's bad, you guys. It's worse than we think. I mean, in the summer, they, they driving their kids up to, you know, to pick up some food.
Right, but that's...
Lunch. I know, and I know, I know what you're doing.
We're not, we're not, we're not cutting it, and then the beautiful thing, we're at fifteen point three on the fund balance, so then I, my recommendation would be to take whatever, what do y'all call it? The manna from heaven? That's the, the term so far?
The profit, as somebody else would call it.
Then it would go back to that fund balance, because that would probably be enough to bring it back to close to sixteen percent or more.
I think so.
It will.
Um, so,
No, I knew you were...
We can, we can then figure out what we are able to do with that to help offset anything else, or if all of a sudden Mr. Duran and, and Mr. Hartley come back and go, hey, guys, the, the four fifty was great this one time, but we're gonna need another hundred and fifty to make it work, because whatever happens.
Yeah, we did our stuff.
Um, and it may be a matter of the schools go in and they, they make the decision, we're gonna do five buses, we're gonna get our fleet cars done, and we're gonna do the, um, some Chromebooks, and then they may come back to us and go, hey, all of a sudden, there's a deal. Can we get more Chrome, we, give them the money to get more Chromebooks, because everybody at some point has a sale. We might, we might catch something, you know, lightning in a bottle, and something good happens for a change, as opposed to health insurance is up twelve percent, it's up twenty percent for you guys. At some point, something has to change, but I think this is a a decent path forward.
Where, where the Chromebooks manufactured? Do we know?
Probably in China.
Sure, China.
Do we know if they're, did they put a tariff on electronics?
Everything imported, the company's tariffed.
Yeah, but, so, so it's not necessarily gonna go up. So, if it's a three hundred and thirty-dollar item, um, it's not necessarily gonna go up to six, it, it, it's, it's a different terminology, so it would be a much smaller tariff than a hundred and twenty-five percent.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
But we're still not looking at utilities.
And my suggestion there is once we know what the manna from heaven becomes, then we can look at doing something as a...
Next year?
Or even, even this year, sometime. When will we know for sure? September-ish?
September.
October first?
Will be the estimate.
Then we can go, boom, we're going to...
India.
We're, we're going to contribute to the utilities.
Well, what, let's go back. I know we're trying to cut the budget. This year, we've already advertised, we're gonna use money out of fund balance. Let's go back to the four point three and use whatever that difference into utilities. And have that planned. Have a transfer into utilities.
So, you're saying...
Leave, leave the advertised...
Four three.
Four three.
So, that would result in a six hundred fifty-five thousand dollar transfer to utilities?
To utilities.
So, you wanna make that six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar transfer doing it that way makes it in perpetuity?
Well, it does.
Or until the next board sits?
Until the board, next board sits.
So...
But I want to see some of the money going to utilities.
Well, that's, that's, that's the thing. I mean, I, I know Ms. Callaway told us, I think it's, or Ms. Legg may know, the dollar amount per penny increase is, is what?
For this year is thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand.
So, the fourteen percent rate increase should be about five hundred and five thousand in additional revenue.
For operating?
For operating. Yes, we have not addressed any of our application or development fees yet. I will be coming to you at some point to entertain that.
Where are we at the development fees? One point two million?
Oh, in the fund. Uh, yes, it's one point eight million, and we've dedicated five hundred and sixty thousand to a particular project. So, one point three.
That's where I would be. I would, I would wanna, I'd wanna match from the, I, I wouldn't wanna do it here in, in this, in this operating budget, because it's going to change, and hopefully, as things start to improve, we have more ratepayers. Um, well, not, it's, it's not you, but as as the villages or the barons or the Hickory Fork project gets going, and we start adding people, then, you know, once we start adding new, new users, the amount of increase hopefully will go down. So, then the amount of match from the county would change. So, that's why I'd like to leave our decision on how much to give, which, as she said, would be five hundred and...
Five oh five-ish.
Five oh five-ish. We could do that in October, once we know exactly what we've got from the increased revenues, and then do that transfer then, and then we can weigh it all out again the next year when we raise the rates, go through the budget, and figure it out in time.
We're raising the rates again, but we're not doing anything with everybody else. That's, I mean...
What do you mean with everybody else?
You're talking about cutting?
No, I'm not talking about cutting. I'm talking about utilities. That's if we do the five hundred and five. If we do the five oh five, these are all ifs and ands.
So, you're talking about having everyone pay, right?
Yes.
Everybody.
But, but, wait, are you saying the difference between three point one and four point three?
Okay, it's six, not, it's six fifty-five versus five oh five.
So, you're, you're saying go back to four point three, but the difference between three point one and four point three is what we would be putting into utilities? Is that what you're saying?
Then, then again, go shoot the moon, go the full six cents and get, dump it all in utility.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying leave it at the four point three. Put it in, put it in the difference in fund balance and then take it out of fund balance.
But...
And that way, it's a one-time thing.
So, there's no guarantee that money's going where it's going? When three board members...
And that's, that's why we do it the one time, and, 'cause it's going to change. That number will change based on everything else. So, putting in the six fifty-five as an operating expense...
I agree.
Is, uh, I'm, I'm preferred where we were.
So, you're saying three one, and then look in September at what we get from...
Once, once Ms. Callaway goes, hey, guys, here's what you have. And Katie can come in and go, hey, guys, we need, it's five oh five to match, or might be five ten, it might be five fifteen. It, it could be six hundred.
Let's go six hundred.
Here you go, Katie. Can I hear that?
Utilities for six hundred, Alex. Um, so, I think that's the conversation that we have in September or October, once we know what we have, what we're up against, and we know what we're doing.
Yep.
For a change.
I thought I would mention too, just as a, kinda keeping up with the neighbors, Mr. Smith and I were at the mayors and chairs meetings today, meeting today, and Williamsburg water is going up. I think they said thirty percent.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, great increase.
So, the, the HR PDC puts out that report every year, and they are in the process of collecting all of that information for surrounding localities. So, when I came to you one of the times, not all of that had been collected yet, but we were seeing that rates were going up.
And then you were counting about forty-five percent?
Also, before I forget, the, the jail payment, it ends in July of thirty-one, but it's fiscal year thirty-two. That'll be the last payment.
Yep.
What is that, a payment amount again?
Four hundred... Yeah.
Four sixty, four seventy, four seventy.
It's close to almost to five hundred, isn't it?
So, can we leave it at three one and then come back on Wednesday to see whether Ms. Steele, Ms. Callaway could look at the county side to see if there's any savings there that could drop it? I mean...
Well, here, so, a week ago, last Thursday, we got the email. Several board members had contacted Ms. Steele and asked for us to do a hard stop on looking at that three percent. Um, I don't know the benefit. I, I think that the terminology I used last week was the juice wasn't worth the squeeze. And I'm not sure that it has changed in those ten days.
So, we all at three point one? As of tonight, so far?
And then RJ is six eighty-four.
Six eighty-four.
And then we'll be owners. Part owners. I'll have to pay, part owners. Part owners.
I'm, I'm happy to go back and, and look at the line items, but I do think
No, no, no.
I'm not sure it's worth it.
The juice is not worth the squeeze.
Juice isn't worth the squeeze, and I believe,
The juice is not worth the squeeze.
I believe if y'all remember back in the day when Mr. Fedors was here, you know, he said he got us lean as a jet fighter or something. And it's with, with where we're at, um, you know, I, I'll have heartburn because I'm a, I, I don't, I don't like tax increases, and I can give you the Winston Churchill quote that I've given every year, but I, I won't this year.
Thank you.
Um...
Do it again.
But it, um...
You can't tax yourself into prosperity.
It's like standing in a bucket and lifting yourself up. Um, but as, as we sit here, um, this is probably the least painful route for us to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Well, I think, you know, if you look at the three point one, the fact that we used one point four from fund balance for operating last year, and then, right, we used...
It was about two hundred and seventy-nine thousand that we used for an operating expense from fund balance.
It was more than that.
It was more than that. Yeah, and then with the two cents that we've had for property relief for veterans, there's, that's three point one, just about, to make up that difference.